Are we good?
They're trying to fix the the view and broadcast right now. So, almost. They'll let you know.
Hi, this is Kate Nguyen. I'm logging into the interpreter. I'm using two device just in case one of them are somehow disconnected. Can you hear me?
Yeah, sounds good. I hear you. Thank you. Sorry, everyone. Just having a little technical difficulty right now. Testing, testing.
Alright, so uh. Just ready, right? Can I stop?
Give me one second, Mayor.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order City Council Successor Agency to the Westminster Redevelopment Agency meeting. Right now, seven fifteen P M. Wednesday, February nine twenty twenty-two. Go call, please.
Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Manza.
I'm here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm here.
Alright.
Members of the council present.
Thank you. Next salute to the flat will be Councilmember Nguyen. Location will be City Attorney. Please stand.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come once again to conduct the people's business. We ask that you would be here with us and help us uh the council to make wise decisions and for staff and for the public uh in their uh participation and the information that we provide and the input that's given. We pray that you would uh assist us in helping to make wise decisions that will be for the benefit of this community and for this county, this state and this country. We commit the meeting to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen and City Attorney. Next, we have uh expectancy communication. None. City report.
Yes, so I'd like to announce that there were late communication e-commerce received for public hearing items four point one and four point two as well as as well as late communication updating item number three point one reflecting the appropriate votes which are posted and available on our city website. And lastly, I'd like to introduce Emergency Services Coordinator Robert Acosta to give us a COVID update.
Good evening. You can hear me okay? Thank you. Okay, um good evening, Mayor Ta, council and the rest of the city staff and the citizens that are watching. So COVID update and some other news for you tonight. So there uh COVID updates can be relatively uh brief. Um there are positive signs of COVID nineteen has peaked and is declining. Um that's continued for a sustained period now. To that point, it's been well reported in in many media outlets that the mask mandate will be removed on uh February fifteenth. And that's for fully vaccinated individuals in the state of California. Um this uh there is was a little bit of confusion with some of the schools in our district. Um this this doesn't apply to schools or um they work under a different set of guidelines. So this is just for the fully vaccinated individuals in public settings, but not the educational form. Um some counties in the state such as L A, I've chosen not to adopt those. So it's that's probably something we're keeping in mind. But in Orange County, it looks like uh we're gonna be adopting those relaxed mask mandates. Uh internally in the city, we continue to see a few new cases. However, it's a trickle compared to what we saw back in uh December and January when we were um really scrambling to keep the to keep the continuity of operations. But it now it's certainly a manageable level and um all indications are slowing down. One of the most important uh or uh one of the bellwethers that really tell us what's gonna happen is testing pressure. The testing pressure that we see in our kiosk and countywide, um it's been it's been a precipitous uh drop off in in demand on testing. I'll give you an example, the kiosks like such as the one we have in front of the city um are averaging right around fifty uh tests a week. Uh back in January and December, they were doing two hundred a day. So it's definitely pick uh you know, definitely um waning and um hopefully everything goes um uh continues in the current trend. All predictive models are indicating that the trend um will be continued. Um and hopefully in the near future will be transitioning transitioning in this state from a pandemic to an endemic. And we can um with uh you know, continued measures, we can put it behind us. Uh that part concludes my um my COVID update. Um with that, I I want to let you all know that this is my last meeting with the city. I've been serving the city of Westminster for twenty year, over twenty years now. Um I served in various roles in the fire service and then all through all ranks in the fire service and um and as your emergency services coordinator. Um I go way back to when the water tank broke in the city Westminster Station sixty-five and we spent plenty of time uh uh three days in a row just up there going through those houses and stuff all the way to to tonight. Um it's been an honor to to work in this city. Um it's been an honor to work with the staff. Um I wish I had time to individual to point out all the individuals that um I've had time to um uh work with on a professional level, but also on a um a personal level. We got I have some uh multiple friendships that I hope uh continue well past uh well past my time here. And um I'm extremely grateful for um a lot of your staff that have taken time to not only know me personally, but my family and um it's just been a a great experience and it really saddens me to leave, but um you know, all good things must come to end and this is a good thing and it's it's gonna be coming to an end for me. Um with that, at this time, I'd like to introduce my successor. My successor is um is his name is David Segura. He's a retired fire chief. He was he was a deputy chief in the city of Long Beach. He was a fire chief in the city of Huntington Beach. He's an interim chief, uh been an interim chief in various cities. He knows E O Cs very well. He ran an E O C in Long Beach, which has the international port and it's it's one of the most robust E O Cs in this in the state. Um I have complete confidence that just like uh Chief Roberts took over my position and and was an improvement. Uh with O C F A, I think that Dave's uh Chief Segura will be an improvement with his experience, his um his um just knowledge and education. He's gonna be uh I'm very confident that he'll be able to uh not only fill my role with uh but improve upon it. So Dave, it's the floor is yours.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate that. Hopefully you can hear me. It appears I may have a bad connection here, but that's why I say good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Okay, good, good. Yes, my name is Robertson. My name is David Segura. And uh it's very glad to be part of the uh city team. I am looking forward to working for uh um recently I had the opportunity to meet with uh Chief of Police Darren Le- Leñez, his command staff and Robert Acosta. They have been very helpful, very supportive and pretty much have prepared me uh for a smooth transition. And uh Robert, don't sell yourself short. Let me tell you, I realized he's leaving quite the legacy. And and I'm filling some big shoes and it's gonna be uh I'm excited and willing uh looking forward to the opportunity as your new emergency services coordinator withdraw from my many years of experience to create a positive impact on the workforce in our community. So at this point, I'd just like to say it's a pleasure to meet you all. I look forward to working with you in the future and uh thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. I'd like first like to thank Mr. Acosta for your report. We appreciate for your service for the last uh twenty years. I think our city staff and all members of the council really appreciate everything you've done for the Westminster community. Uh first, I'd advise uh chief and recently as emergency coordinator, I'd like to welcome a new um chief as emergency coordinator. Uh really appreciate everything you've done and uh we uh look forward uh to your future update about COVID nineteen. I really appreciate that. Yeah, welcome. Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, do we have any any question or any concerns for uh?
Uh maybe to uh say uh wish Mr. Acosta good goodbye and good luck, sir. And uh I hope uh it's not a retire retire, right? It's a better opportunity somewhere, I hope. So thank you very much for your service and uh take care. Good luck to you retirement.
Uh thank you for the kind words. Mr. Mayor, can I I have some comments?
Please, please.
Um I just wanna thank Mr. Robert Acosta for his dedication for all these years and uh especially his hard work during these last couple of years with the pandemic and the extra workload that he has taken on to keep us informed, keep our community informed. Oh, so thank you very much, Mr. Acosta, for for um all your hard work in our city. I wish you well, um good luck. And maybe you can spend some more some extra time with your family. Um and also I wanna welcome Mr. Segura. Look forward to um working with you and good luck. Thank you, guys.
And I just wanna quick uh comment um or just wanna quickly say goodbye to uh Mr. Robert Acosta. Um your position and being your position must have been really difficult. Sometimes you have to deliver bad to very bad news. And so you did a very good job and uh so we felt very um safe in your hands and um you're in your leadership. Thank you for doing everything that you did to help our city. And good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Same thing, same thing for me. Uh it's good to hear the your report today about uh good news about the uh reducing the pandemic. Uh the number is going down uh tremendously, which is uh good news for our city, for our community. And uh the council, the mayor and the council already said everything. So good luck to you. Enjoy your time off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so uh uh do we have any report from uh city manager?
Hello, everyone. We absolutely have a city manager report tonight. I'll try to keep it brief. Um so first of all, just piggybacking on everyone's uh thank yous to Robert. Um I had the pleasure of working with him when he was the division chief and then, of course, during COVID, um when he was our emergency services coordinator. Um so thank you, Robert, for everything you've done for the community and for our organization and wish you the best. Um in other news, uh recently there was a Westminster Mall um rumor that was circulating on Nextdoor and social media, so definitely wanted to address that. Um recently, staff became aware of those rumors and um essentially the posts that were circulating stated that there was an imminent full closure of the mall. Um and I wanted to clear that out for everyone in the community that staff meets regularly with the mall to provide updates on the status of city projects, um particularly on the, you know, on the four oh five project. Um the staff did reach out to the mall to verify this um this news or this rumor. And we did speak to management and were informed that they are looking forward to 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 the uh delivery of the Westminster Mall specific plan uh so that they can participate in the redevelopment efforts of the site in twenty twenty-three. So the rumor is absolutely false. Um so you know, if you heard anything that the mall's closing, the mall is not closing. Um over in community services, we um will be hosting a Valentine's lunch outdoors, weather permitting, over for the over at the senior center, which would be nice. Um that's gonna be on Monday, February fourteenth at twelve P M. Family Resource Center is gonna be hosting a mobile library from the Orange County Public Libraries uh next Wednesday on February sixteenth. And then Recreation and Recreation Division. I know everyone's kind of wondering about the status of classes that are happening. Um we've seen better than expected registration since the first of the year with almost three hundred participants enrolled um in our contract classes. So that's exciting. Things are starting to return to normal. And then um over at the senior center, they are continuing to distribute twenty-seven hundred grab and go meals along with nine hundred and seventy-five home delivered meals uh to our homebound seniors. So uh definitely a lot of activity going on there. Um over in H R, uh we have, uh they just wanna announce we have a couple of new hires. Um Delma Artega is going to be starting soon. She is going to be our H R analyst. And that will then um that will then uh make the department whole. So our H R department will finally be um whole. We also just recently uh hired our accounting manager, which is Amy Wu. So we'd like to welcome uh both Amy and Delma to our team. Um, let's see. Other than that, Public Works, um we have a playground renovation project, um installation of the playground equipment at both uh at both Margie L Rice and at Westminster Park. That's still ongoing. Estimated completion date is gonna be in the middle of March. Now we touched on that last meeting. Uh Bolsa, the undergrounding project, the utility project. Um that project, it's collaboration between city, Southern County, Edison, other utilities. It is ongoing with several phases um underway in the next coming weeks. Uh but traffic has been severely impacted due to like lane closures. So I know we've been receiving some complaints, some concerns about traffic flow. Um the businesses around there, you will continue to see um activity, but the businesses that are there will be notified of upcoming activities. So just please be patient with, you know, the construction efforts. Um Orange County Sanitation District Sewer Improvement Project. That is happening along Westminster Boulevard between Bolsachica and Rancho Road. Uh contractors been working on that. Um obviously, it's going to be impacting traffic as well. Um but the majority of that work is not gonna be taking place until dry season, which begins on April fifteenth. Strange because we're in like summer season right now, but um we'll be, you know, so we'll be having some construction work on that side as well. So there is a lot of activity going on right now. So please just everyone bear with us. Um this last Saturday, we um the city assisted with the Tet Parade uh that was held on our city streets. Um that was a private event that was permitted uh by the by the uh the city for that. And I just wanted to take note that um our city staff worked very hard to move the parade forward in as safe as a manner as we possibly could. So I wanted to take this opportunity to just thank our staff that worked really hard on that. Um you know, uh working from, you know, planning in the planning phases to the actual day of the parade. It's just great to see everybody out there um and enjoying and and having good time, but also um you know, having good time safely. So thank you to our staff for that. And then, of course, our counterparts over in Garden Grove, um Garden Grove Fountain Valley. Um feel like I'm missing someone there, but um you know, but some of our other cities that that helped out with the event. So thank you very much. And that is all I have for my report. Actually, sorry. Just kidding. I do have one more thing. Um we have a couple of vacancies on just kidding. We have a couple of vacancies on um a few of our commissions. So I wanted to note that we are accepting applications. There's a vacancy on Planning Commission. There is a vacancy on the Community Services and Recreation Commission. The uh Measure S S Citizens Oversight Committee, uh there's a vacancy on that as well. And then, of course, we've had ongoing uh vacancies on personnel and the Commission on Aging. So we're expected to go to council on February twenty-third meeting. So if any applicant wants to be considered for that meeting, applications are due February fifteenth. Um instructions are online. You can look that up online. Basically, just email. You know, you can email your document, mail it in, bring it in, but they are due by five thirty P M on February fifteenth. And then anyone who's submitted an application uh within the past year who was not appointed, your application is automatically being considered. So that's really all I have for tonight. So thank you.
But I ask you quickly, uh who who are the council members that are with the vacancies?
So for the for the planning commission, it would be Councilmember Nguyen's vacancy. For Community Services and Recreation, that was Councilman Doe's vacancy. And then the Citizens Oversight Committee, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I believe that that was Councilmember Nguyen's appointee. I'm sorry?
Commission for Aging is that Councilmember Doe?
Uh no, no, the Commission on Aging, I actually don't have that one off the top of my head either, but I believe that one was just an at-large. Not every, not everybody has a not all these commissions have like a council member attached to it.
Okay.
Um.
No, thank you.
Alright, I thank you so much for your report, City Manager. So next we have oral communication.
So this is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction. At this time, I will be allowing members of the public to speak for a total of five minutes. I did not receive any e-commerce. So if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. And when I call your name, I will allow you to speak. So if I could please have the interpreter interpret that. Okay, and I did receive one request to speak in advance. So at this time, I'll be calling your name, followed by any attendees. So the first speaker would be Tony Booy.
Yes, good evening. This is Tony Booy speaking. Did you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Tita, Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo, and City Council member. I am a resident of uh city of Westminster for twenty years. And in the past twenty years, I saw good result from the previous people who contribute a lot to make city growing. However, in the past four years, I saw many elected official city council did not fulfill their obligation to serve. to serve for the residents of city of Westminster. However, they kept concentrate on fake news, spreading fake news, spreading defamation within the city members. That is not good for our city of Westminster. I think that you, all of you have to concentrate to make our city better. And now, I know that in our city, they have the good, the bad, and the ugly. First of all, I saw Mr. Taido is a good in physical. He has a husky body for ethical code. However, he is bad because he is the most unethical councilman. He has been caught that kill innocent people in city of Long Beach. He had commit something bad among women environment.
Mr. Mayor, when are you gonna stop this?
The ugly things.
Uh, I'd like to remind, you know, member of, of the community that, you know, we, you know, when you speak, please don't, you know, targeting, uh, council member by name or by something privately.
Yeah, thank you.
Issues that are discussed relate to items on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the city council. If it involves a completely personal matter, then we should avoid that.
Can I continue? And the is only the ugly thing that he called Westminster is a whole cement city, which is not acceptable among the city, the residents of city of Westminster. That is the ugly part committed by Mr. Taido. The third, second person which is, is good, which is Carlos Menzo, he's good. I've been working with him is the planning commissioner. However, after he become the city council, he showed his that he is bad in decision making. That he said that he will take down the Trang Hung Dao Hung Dao Wun, that means the statue on Bonsa. That is a bad decision. You should withdraw that decision right away. And the most ugly part is he colluded with some other people to stir up the city of Westminster environment. That's the ugly part. The third person is very good. Uh, working because I support her, that is Kimberly Ho. I signed, put the signature to have her to run the city council. However, after two, four years recently, she made some bad decision because she really broke the promise that she made to the people. And she recently, she spread the distorted information about Diungu Temple. I met with the airport at Diungu Temple and they are the respected reverend. They built the temple to for all the Buddhist people to worship, the good way of living. Now you spread this information, you defame the reverend and you divide within the community. That is very bad decision, Kimberly Ho. You should repent and change your mind if you want to climb up the ladder of serving the people.
You know what, we, we. So I, I object to all these fake news of being allowed to bring up in this public comment because.
Councilmember Doe, so this is the, uh, public comment, so. What do we wait after the public speak, please?
Well, I just want to bring it up to you as a chair of this meeting. You need to make sure that you will not allow fake information, false information to get through. There's no one, the council never tried to re, to take the back the land, the, the, the temple. And as well.
You're more than welcome to respond in the, you know, in the council item part, but this is, you know, member of the public, please.
Oh, you, you're the, the member of public using the platform to spread fake news is not acceptable. As, as a chair of this meeting, you need to stop that.
As a chair of the, of the meeting, I need to respect, you know, uh, member of the public, we know with peace.
City Attorney, chime in.
Yeah.
We can't have this going on.
Well, the, the public is allowed.
Cannot be acceptable.
Please, City Attorney.
The public is allowed to make statements, even critical statements of the city council, as long as it pertains to the city council and their role on the council or anything on the agenda, anything within their jurisdiction. So you would certainly have an opportunity to respond to something that is false and indicate that it's false. So you don't have to just leave that out there without responding to it. But the public does have an opportunity to say things that they feel they might think are true, but may not be true.
Let's make sure, can we make sure that Mr. Buoy gets the allotted time that council interrupted? We don't want to shortchange it.
So I'd like to, thank you for that. I'd like to ask, um, City Club for time of Mr. Buoy. So how much time he still have?
One second. Okay, I keep talking the last thing, that all of the three people that I just mentioned, they have their mind to be a good person, but they distorted the mind. They have their heart to be compassionate for the growth of the city, but they, um, contaminate their heart. And they have conscience to work for the good of the people, but they themselves destroy their conscience, mind. So they are, all the three of you are not worth to be city council of city of Westminster. I bet that if all of you are good, you should serve for the benefit of the residents and constituents of city of Westminster. Thank you.
Um, can we, since, can we make sure that the public, I know that, um, our city manager or city manager have made a, a public statement about the factual truth about that, the general statue?
Yeah, can I just clarify something here? The city council, for items that are not on the agenda, you can, under the law, what we call briefly respond to something that's said. So what that means is that if there's something is said that needs to be addressed, um, you can briefly respond to indicate, in this case, if you believe that this is false and maybe even ask the city manager to clarify something, that would be appropriate. What we can't do would be to have three of us get into a discussion of it. Okay, so I just want to make clear to the council, if something's said, you can briefly respond to it.
Yes, thank you, City Attorney. I just want to make sure that community understands and knows that, that the truth about what, uh, what has been the city can and cannot do on private property. And this statue is on private property. City has no authority or any council member has any authority to remove something that's on private property. Is that correct, city manager?
That is correct. There are and there are no plans to remove said statue.
In case you missed the memo, I think you already put out a memo and clearly stated our position. And that was back when it started going Christmas time, so.
It was, yes. On New Year's, on New Year's Eve, there was a, there was an email that I did send out that's, that to help the council address these allegations. The statue is privately funded on private property and the city has no authority to take it down. We are not taking down the statue.
And the reason I bring this up is because I find this, this false rumor and this, this fake news that's being spread out in the community is because that, that there is a very important and a very honored, uh, general statue of the general. And I mean, I find it very destructive to, for the community to believe that, that that's, that myself or any, any other member of the, of the council said that. And that's very dangerous for that rumor to be spread. That's a fake, false rumor, a dangerous rumor.
And would I, uh, but since we, uh, we are always starting that process, could you, um, my name is City Manager, inner room City Manager, would you be so kind and clarify the, uh, rumor, that so-called fake news being flown around that the city council trying to take back the land that, that the, the Diungu Temple is being built? And we tried to prosecute the, uh, the venerable, uh, Tipping Lee, uh, and tried to prosecute him by purchasing the, the land that he, which he built a temple upon. So could you clarify, is anything going on in the city that, that, um, the city council have made any decision or talking about? Anything remotely close to that? Could you, uh, would you verify and confirm that, please?
Sorry, let me unmute myself there. Um, so I know we could actually go on for an entire evening full of fake news, but to just briefly address that, there's no action to do any of what you've just said.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, then it may also just say those were two separate items, so we didn't have a discussion. You had two separate council members asking for clarification on two different items and clarification was provided. And let me just add, just for the record, to be clear on this, that to my knowledge, there has been no discussion by anyone on the council related to the removal of that statue, nor has there been ever any discussion about, um, the city doing anything with that land. Uh, so I just want to be sure with regards to the, the temple, there's been no discussion whatsoever.
And I would like to ask that if Mr. Tony Buoy insists and if she, he still has further questions, please contact the interim city manager, Christine Corden. Please, before you speak any further and spreading more, uh, fake news and continue with your fake news. And I'm a bit of a, I know that, thank you.
Yeah, just, just to piggyback on that real quick. And I know because we can't have a further discussion of this. It may just be a full item on its own. But yes, if anybody has any concern about city business or fake news that you've heard out there, you know, including members of the media who may want to ask or report any particular, um, you know, action, you know, whether it's by the city council thing that you heard, contact me, contact the city. Can call me, email me. That information is on the website. You know, if you get in contact with a council member to get ahold of me, I can certainly, you know, direct, um, anyone's concerns about what's going on with the city. One of my staff members can assist or myself personally can assist. So please use us as a resource, as the actual source of the news.
Yes, I'd like to remind the member of the public, I believe that a public hearing will start at 8:00 PM. So I think that we have only nine minutes for oral communication and we may continue after a public hearing. Am I right? Correct? Okay, so next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Stella Verdeja.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Stella Verdeja. I would like to speak on 4.2.
Stella, so at this time we're doing oral communications. Uh, you'd have to wait for item 4.2 to speak on that item during the public hearing.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, so our next speaker would be Terry Rains.
Good evening. I had a great time at the Tet Parade. It was wonderful to see our community come together and set aside our differences to enjoy this very special culturally significant event in our city. A special thanks to our city staff and police department who worked so hard to make this parade happen in spite of the chaos during the event planning and the ridiculous fake news and hyperbole spread by Nam Quan and company. Great job, everyone. I pointed out to staff a material error in the January 5th meeting minutes, item 3.1. Hence, the revised version you received via late communications. The Quan Chi Monument Depiction and Design minus the emblems and verbiage was approved with a 302 vote with Mayor Ton, Councilman Wen abstaining. The minutes had wrongly recorded that vote as 5:00 initially and the verbal report of the vote tally at the meeting was also wrong. The city must do a better job of accurately recording actions taken by this council, both orally and in the minutes. Why is ordinance 2575, item 3.2, just now coming back before council for the final reading and adoption? The first reading was back on October 13th. Four months is a long time between introduction and final adoption. I hope item 3.3 is the last time the city rezones public semi-public land to high density residential, but I doubt it will be. The warrant register, item 3.4, shows 19 checks totaling $53,078 paid to Jones and Mayor with more to outside law firms. Is the city confident that all legal fees billed are in full compliance with Rule 1.5 of the California Rules of Professional Conduct for Attorneys? Item 6.1, whether or not to add a five district map for voter approval to the June 7th ballot measure concerning the office of elective mayor is a surprise. The staff report did not provide a complete background and the wording is contentious and a bit odd such as the mayor is elected by every vote in the voter in the city. No, the mayor is not elected by every voter in the city. The mayor is elected at large. Words matter. Seven months ago, the city attorney provided erroneous advice to more than one council member stating four affirmative council votes were needed to place this elective mayor major on the ballot, causing a substantial delay in bringing the item before council. It first appeared on the October 13th, 2021 agenda at the request of Councilman Doe, but was deferred to the October 27th meeting. When the matter was finally considered at the October 27th meeting, Councilman Doe asked the city attorney to clarify the number of affirmative votes needed to place the measure on the ballot. And the city attorney finally admitted publicly that it is only a simple majority, three votes was needed. By this time, the city attorney had had months to research the applicable laws and procedures as to how this ballot measure might impact the city's redistricting process. Yet, when the city attorney was asked questions about this, he repeatedly replied, I'm not sure. I'll have to research that and get back to you, causing even further delay. Ultimately, council voted 3-2, Mayor Ton, Councilman Wen voted no to direct staff to prepare and bring back the appropriate resolutions. The resolutions were on the November 10th agenda, the same meeting as the first redistricting public hearing, and was moved before the hearing, creating confusion for everyone. The city attorney again presented his doom and gloom report about the viability of making the deadline to submit an adopted five district map to the registrar of voters in time for the November election, if the voters approved the June ballot measure. He even opined the city might have to go to court for a ruling due to the one day discrepancy between when the ROV could certify the June 7th election results, assuming the last day of the 30-day deadline, versus when the ROV had to have an adopted map for the November election. He made odd statements such as the map deadline is 29 days after the June election. This July 6th map deadline has nothing to do with the June election. State law maps be adopted, submitted, no later, no less than 125 days before an election. Council ultimately voted 3-2, Ton, when voting no again, to approve the resolutions and place a measure on the ballot. Now, that was three months ago. Legal counsel and the demographer have repeatedly implied, and the ROV stated they must have proof of a five district map is adopted and ready to go before they will place the ma, mayor major on the June ballot. Never once has the city attorney's office mentioned even the possibility of including the five district map with the ballot major for voters to approve until now. Lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on our part. There are pros and cons to this idea. In my opinion, voters should not be asked to approve a five district map because that's not consistent with established law and procedure. The five district map approval process should be no different than the four district map approval process. So either the voters must approve all district maps or none. But the adopted five district map should be included in the voter information guide, voter reference and full transparency, and therefore it should be adopted in time to have that happen. And the four district map should be adopted at the same time. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is Kim and Dow.
Yes, I'm sorry. Is this like, uh, open topic or do I have to, uh, speak to a specific, uh, uh, article?
Uh, this is regular oral communications.
Awesome. Alright.
As long, as long as it's not items 4.1 or 4.2 in the public hearing.
Okay, so greeting everyone. Uh, first of all, I'd like to explain. Okay, so greeting everyone. Uh, first of all, I'd like to explain my most sincere welcome and congratulations to the new members of the city staff and management. Uh, I'm sorry, I I know that you, uh, the city managers told us that we just have some new members, so I'm sure I I'll be missing some, so my, um, apology if if, uh, you know, I I I don't know you all. I couldn't get you all. So first of all, I'd like to congratulate, explain my congratulations to the Vice Mayor, Carlos Mendo, Chief of Police Darren Lengy, interim city manager Christine Gordon, and interim assistant man city manager Adolfo Azeta. I'm sorry if I I mispronounce your names. And also farewell to Community Service Director Diana Dobert, interim city clerk Lucy Colombo, Assistant City Clerk Abigail Alcala, uh, Administrative Assistant Tanya Ramirez, uh, Emergency Service Coordinator Dave Segura. And I also thank you, the former Emergency Service Coordinator Acosta, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, Robert. And also, I guess, uh, HR Analyst Dama and Accounting Chief Amy Wu. And if I missed anyone, I also like to thank every one of you for your participation in helping to, uh, make the Tate Parade, uh, success. And, uh, like, uh, I was interviewing, uh, council member Tidall this afternoon. And I'm hoping that the city will adopt a measure to recognize, uh, the Tate Parade is a uh, community event, uh, it would help the city, it's a event that, uh, would bring tourism to the city. Uh, an event that the city would, uh, endorse, would embrace. And I'm not saying that you guys have to provide, uh, free police service, but I guess in the future, if you guys can find anything, any way to, uh, coordinate and to help make it uh, an event, uh, you know, like a joint venture with the, uh, coordinators, that'd be great. And also, I'd like to congratulate, uh, to all the residents of our city to, uh, hopefully, we will adopt the map with the five dis- district. And in June, we would vote to, uh, change the voting system to get rid of the, uh, election, uh, of the mayor directly and changing, switching to the, uh, rotating mayor, uh, system. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, thank you. So right now is eight P M. So we have public hearing. And I believe that, uh, uh, we don't have any other speaker in order communication. Am I, am I, am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So close order communicate order communication and next we have public hearing. Yes.
So due to COVID nineteen restriction, changes have been made to the public hearing process in order to ensure members of the public may participate remotely. Members of the public who wish to address the city council were able to in writing up to twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. And the unwritten comments, members of the public who wish to speak tonight may raise their hands or had the opportunity to send a request in advance, which I did not see. With that said, speakers will have a total of five minutes to speak. Five for four, the the four district map and five for the five district.
Thank you so much. I'd like to open public hearing. This is the
If I may, just real quickly, so that anybody who's watching, so they're clear. Um, we have a a public hearing that's scheduled for eight P M. That has to start at eight P M. We are guarding, uh, redistricting. That's item number four point one on your agenda. We're bypassing the consent calendar right now, but we will come back to that consent calendar once this public hearing is completed.
Wonderful. Thanks, uh, city manager, uh, city attorney for reminding me that. So I'd like to open public hearing, the public hearing for redistricting to receive input and testimony regarding proposed draft district map submitted composition of council district boundaries and communities of interest. So open public hearing. So first I'd like to have our staff report.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kimberly Hall Barlow, Johnson Mayor, uh, Deputy City Attorney. Um, what we're going to do this evening is is hear from our, um, our expert uh, on the, uh, meetings that have been held, the input from the community, uh, the draft maps that have been submitted, uh, and um, how those comply or don't comply and what the recommendations are. And what we'd like to do is take additional public comment on those and then have the city council, uh, provide direction in terms of revisions to any of the maps. And we will, um, do the four district maps and then the five district maps. Uh, so with that is Dr. Levitt is available, Dr. Justin Levitt, uh, who is our demographer, uh, and has been working with us on putting uh, this matter, uh, together and he has a PowerPoint for you.
Thank you, our Mayor Ta, uh, members of the council, members of the community who are listening over Zoom um, and watching the recording. Uh, my name is Dr. Justin Levitt. It's a pleasure to be back in the city of Westminster to present on the redistricting. Uh, this is our third public hearing and just to kind of briefly refresh our memories for those of us who haven't been following since December. This redistricting is required after every census. And so even though the city only switched to district elections a couple of years ago, following the twenty twenty census, the state requires all cities that use district elections in some capacity to redraw the map. And so, um, in addition, we also have to take into account changes in the population as well as new laws like the Fair Maps Act. Just to kind of remind ourselves, um, there are both four and five district maps. Um, the council will eventually be asked to make a selection of one of each. Um, but we need to make a selection of a four district map, that that is the requirement under the redistricting. And to ensure that we are able to, um, elect by district in November, um, we need to have, um, a five district map selected as well. Um, and I'll let your city attorneys explore that more later on tonight. I know, uh, that's on the agenda. Um, just to refresh our memories, these are sort of an overview of the criteria that we are looking at when it comes to evaluating the maps. Um, and so all of the maps, whatever map is adopted, must comply with federal and state requirements. Uh, federal requirements begin with equal population. Um, all the districts must be substantively equal in terms of their total number of residents. Um, that means approximately twenty-two thousand residents in each of the four districts or eighteen thousand in each of the five districts. Uh, I know I'm rounding here, but if you look at the spreadsheets, you can find that exact number. Um, if, in addition, we have to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. Uh, race cannot be the only factor or the predominant factor, but we have to take into consideration protected class communities. Um, and I'll explore that as we look at the different map options. Um, in the middle column, we have our new criteria. This is comes from the Fair Maps Act. Um, and these are rank ordered in terms of priority and significance. So first, maps must be contiguous. Um, all parts of the district must touch each other. There must be some physical connection. Districts that only touch at a corner are not considered contiguous. Uh, then we have to look at undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest as the law states. Socioeconomic and geographic areas that need to be kept together for the purposes of effective representation must be kept together. Now, this is going to pose a bit of a challenge. And you know, this is where partly that rank order comes in. Um, because we have communities in Westminster such as Little Saigon that are too large to be contained in a single district. Uh, and so there needs to be some discussion on the best way to divide those communities and you'll see some options tonight. Uh, third, easily identifiable boundaries, uh, to the extent that we can follow major roads, other subdivisions, including both, um, you know, natural, man-made and even political subdivisions like school district jurisdictional boundaries to make it easy for voters to understand which area they live in. And then fourth, compactness, which they define as not bypassing one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. Um, this is a little bit of a challenge in our city because of Midway City and some of the unincorporated areas. Um, how do we define, how do we think about this idea of compactness? When right in the center of the city, there's an unincorporated pocket. Uh, also, the Fair Maps Act prohibits favoring or discriminating against a political party. So partisanship is not a consideration that can be used in making the choice. Now, in the third column, other traditional districting principles. These are factors that we can consider after and only after we consider the federal and state criteria. Uh, for example, consideration of future population growth um, or voter shifting between different election years or respecting the voters' choices, uh, the idea that the voters of the city have elected a council and that it should be up to the voters to decide whether council members to continue. We can use these when we're looking at two maps that we believe are equally compliant under the Fair Maps Act and federal requirements. And we're making that final choice between them, kind of the tiebreakers, if you will. Um, now, in addition to the drafts maps we have as PDFs and in the presentation tonight, we also have an interactive review map on the website that allows people to view each of the different plans to turn on and off them. Uh, we have the current district boundaries available as a thick black line over the different maps so that it's easy to see where the current district boundaries match, uh, or don't match the proposed district boundaries. Um, and we might be able to bring it up tonight if there are questions about specific locations or addresses. Um, it really is a very powerful review tool. Um, and that, of course, is available on the Draft Maps webpage, um, that the city has set up. Uh, now, we have received both four and five district maps, both from the community and prepared by N D C. Um, tonight, we have a total of six four district maps and five five district maps. Uh, we've numbered them so that all the maps starting with four, so four oh one, four oh two, and so on, are the four district maps. And the maps that begin with five are the five district maps. That way we can tell them apart, um, and no confusion about which category a map falls in. We did hold four workshops and we did have some, uh, we did, we did, we did hear commentary from some residents, um, and that has been collected, um, as well as, um, public maps. Uh, we actually, we have four four, four of the six four district maps and three of the five, five district maps are public submissions. Now, in terms of numbering, I just want to say a word about this. It's not that hard in the four district maps because the four numbers kind of stay where they are, um, moving from west to east. Um, there is potentially a question in five district maps as to which district, district five gets assigned to. Uh, of course, district five is currently the mayor's position, um, as is elected citywide. Um, most of these maps have opted to simply number from west to east. Um, and so we have adopted that convention here tonight, although that is a decision that um, that 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 the council can weigh in on as part of the deliberation. Uh, if it makes more sense to put district four where it currently is on the eastern end of the city and and district five somewhere, you know, uh, in relation to it, uh, we can certainly, um, look at that as we move forward. Uh, moving into the different draft maps, um, I'm happy to say that all of the maps that we have received from the community as well as the N D C maps meet the basic legal requirements. That is, they all are population balanced, they all are geographically contiguous. Um, they each have the same analysis under the Voting Rights Act. Um, each of our four district maps has two majority Asian American districts by citizen voting age population. Each of our five district maps have three majority Asian districts by citizen voting age population. Um, each of the, each of the maps has a slightly higher concentration of Latino residents um, as well as, you know, most of these maps, somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five percent Asian American, um, in district two as well. Um, and so in each of the maps, districts three and four are going to be majority Asian. Um, and in area two, we see the concentration of the Latino community. Um, where we are really looking for, uh, move forward is with that discussion of communities of interest. Um, because that's the real criteria that is a bit subjective in the eyes of the community. Um, and so we want to understand which the maps does the best job of representing and capturing the different communities of interest. Um, and so we have maps, uh, four oh one, uh, four oh two and four oh three, which are all very similar proposals. They all create very vertical um, districts throughout the city. They all use Beach Boulevard as a very solid dividing line. Um, in fact, you'll see identical districts between them. I I'm happy to note that we use a variety of different mapping tools that the city adopted as part of our submission, so we both received maps via Dave's redistricting tool and Matitude for redistricting. Uh, we also received map four oh four from one of our community organizations. Um, they also came to speak at several meetings and, um, one of the things that they discussed in their maps were some, uh, or in their proposals, were some of the east or east to west uh, sort of alliances or neighborhoods within the city, particularly when it comes to multifamily housing, um, plant, the, you know, um, trailer parks and other low-income communities, uh, particularly highly impacted communities. Um, and so this, you can see both in their map, in in this community map four oh four and in the first N D C map four oh five. Uh, one of the big changes we tried to look at in map four oh five was by putting some of the communities mentioned by name in the letters we received from the Westminster Redistricting Coalition into the same district. Um, and specifically, we we saw cluster of communities along Westminster Boulevard kind of, uh, between Edwards and Hoover, um, as well as a second cluster of, um, trailer parks and other low-income multifamily housing along Bolsa Avenue. Um, and so this one, this map, four oh four and four oh five, um, both have two districts that are majority renters rather than owners. Um, whereas, um, you know, other maps only have one district. Um, and four oh six looks at, um, sort of a more minimal changes. This one keeps more or less your current districts intact, um, but adjusts for the population issues. Um, actually, we put that Bolsa Avenue community, multifamily housing, trailer, um, trailer park communities. They're all unified or mostly unified in area four in this map rather than area three. Um, so, again, trying to listen to what we heard in those meetings and and try to keep those communities together. In particular, uh, one of the things you'll look see, uh, with some of the, the, just the numbers we see in these maps is that four oh four, four oh five and four oh six, um, each create a district that is, um, approximately twenty-eight percent Latino by citizen voting age or eligible voter population. Uh, in area two. Um, and one of the ways they do that is by, um, going as far south as Bolsa and the Westminster Mall, but not crossing that, not crossing the four oh five or Bolsa Avenue um, to get the area south of the Memorial Park. Um, in addition, we received several five district maps. Um, five oh one and five oh two, um, were both submitted by the same individual, um, and they're both very vertical maps. Uh, we also see that we also got received four five oh three, uh, which was from the same community organization that submitted four oh four, um, as well. Um, and then to add to the conversation, N D C created, um, four five oh four, which is another vertical option, um, that in our, in our ideas, um, you know, mimic, you know, incorporates a lot of the feedback we did receive about, um, many of the major roads, uh, particularly on the western end of the city, Edwards and Hoover, uh, being good division lines and trying to, you know, keep some of these neighborhoods, um, in the same, in the same district, again, not taking district two south of Bolsa. Um, map five oh four or five oh five really comes out of that community testimony about multifamily housing again. Um, we try to keep that Bolsa Avenue community together on the eastern end of the city. Um, and so what we've done is kind of by taking the district across at Hazard and then down Magnolia, more or less. Um, I know it kind of looks a little bit unusual, but, um, a lot of that is because of Midway City. If you, if you actually look at the connectivity of that region, Interstate five, the southern end of Beach Boulevard, um, really serve as major thoroughfares in that neighborhood. And, um, if you look at, um, some of the demographics, And if you look at some of the demographics. This one, this one creates a District Three that is mostly single-family housing. And Districts Five is mostly multifamily, or it's more multifamily, more renters. And so it really does follow some of the demographic patterns that we saw. But of course, you know, these are just some of the numbers, what we're seeing in some of the, some of the numbers. That's only part of the discussion about communities of interest. Because ultimately, we need to hear from the community, we want to hear from the council as well. On which of these maps does the best job of representing the city for the next four years. And if none of these maps work, what can we bring back at our next meeting? What changes can we make? And as part of this conversation, I want to emphasize that you don't have to like or dislike the entire map. If there's a portion or an area you like, let us know. Because oftentimes, the best map is one that combines the western end of one map and the eastern end of another. And so with that, I look forward to our conversation tonight. And remember, we're not adopting anything tonight. This is just about trying to move the conversation toward that adoption. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, this would be an appropriate time to take public comment unless any of the council members have questions for Dr. Levitt or for me.
Alright, so I think that I'd like to open public comment first and then ask. Member of the city council if they have any concerns or any comment. Okay, so.
There was a request that the separate comments be made or allowed. Related to the four district maps versus the five district maps. So it would. In my opinion, it would be best if we could open this up for comment. If anybody wants to comment on the four district maps and then treat it separately with five districts. That might give somebody a chance to speak twice if they have separate comments on each of the different, because they, they are different. Completely, four districts versus five. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. So now I'd like to open public comment for four council district map. Okay.
So I did receive ecomments, so at this time I'll be reading the ecomments followed by anyone wishing to speak. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. I could have the interpreter translate that. So our first ecomment was from Min Pham. She states, Dear City Clerk, my name is Min Pham. I am writing as a resident of Westminster Second District. I have lived at the corner of Golden West Street and Maple Street. I'm currently a part of the Westminster Redistricting Committee with VietRise, where I worked over the past six months. We would like to ask the Westminster City Council to keep all of the four districts together for the following reasons. District A maintains the integrity of an affluent, long-time, single-family homeowner community west of Golden West Street together. District B creates a compact district that keeps low-income Latino and Vietnamese residents. Who primarily live in apartments, mobile homes, and single-family homes together east of Golden West Street up to Beach Boulevard and north of Hazard. The district contains the largest CVAP Latino population at twenty-nine point twenty-nine percent in and around Siggler Park. District C creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district in a district that contains the second-largest mobile home park concentration for a total. The district contains a large number of low-income Vietnamese, white, and Latino populations. District D creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district with the highest CVAP Vietnamese population of seventy-one point sixty-three of Vietnamese residents. The district includes numerous communities of interest, including low-income communities, working-class communities, mixed-immigration status families. Monolingual communities, tenant communities, and housing cost burdened communities. The district contains the largest concentration of mobile home parks, eight total. The district keeps the core of Bolsa Avenue together. District E maintains the integrity of single-family homeowners, apartment, and mobile home residents together. The district contains the second-largest CVAP Vietnamese population of sixty-three point thirty-three percent. The district also keeps together the third-largest mobile home park concentration of two total. Additionally, we would also like to ask the city council to keep all of the five districts together for the following reasons. District A maintains the integrity of a long-time, single-family homeowner community west of Golden West Street and lives along the four oh five freeway. District B creates a compact district that keeps low-income Latino Vietnamese residents. Who primarily live in apartments, mobile homes, and single-family homes together east of Golden West Street up to Beach Boulevard and north of Hazard Avenue. This district contains the largest CVAP Latino population of twenty-seven point sixty percent in and around Siggler Park. This district also keeps together the second-tied largest mobile home park concentration of three total. District C creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district with the highest CVAP Vietnamese population of sixty-nine point thirty-nine percent of Vietnamese residents. The district includes numerous communities of interest, including low-income communities, working-class communities, mixed-immigration status families. Monolingual communities, tenant communities, and housing cost burdened communities. The district contains the largest concentration of mobile home parks of nine total. The district keeps the core of Bolsa Avenue together. District D maintains the integrity of single-family homeowners, apartment, and mobile home residents together. The district contains the second-largest CVAP Vietnamese population, sixty-two point one percent. This district also keeps together the second-tied largest mobile home park concentration of three total. These are important places for our community because it is where residents and community members from both Latinx and Vietnamese, both locally and nationally. Gather together during special holidays and occasions. It will also keep our whole community together because we have the same demographics and history. Plus, there is a high population of Latinx communities living in the area. Moreover, there is a lot of low-income Latinx and Vietnamese residents living in the area as well. The map is the representation of our community. We are all together working as a community regardless of everyone's background and their socioeconomic status. Therefore, everyone should have the contribution to make it, make sure it is the right map. Plus, the community should deserve to know about the process as the citizens and the residents of this country. Therefore, I think this map is a representation of our community. Lastly, I think mobile home parks, new immigrants, younger and older generations of Vietnamese Americans. Along with our Latinx and Asian Pacific Islanders should be kept with one another. Our country is built by immigrants and it is a collective group of individuals who wants to pursue the American dream. Hence, I think it is important that we should include these communities in the redistricting process. Best regards, Min Pham. Our next ecomment is from Dan Ma. It states, Dear Westminster City Council. I support public maps number five oh three and number four oh four proposed by the Westminster Redistricting Committee. Many of my neighbors and classmates are mobile home residents. These maps are crucial to the fair representation of the city's mobile home park residents. As one of Westminster's few remaining affordable housing options. Mobile home parks provide an indispensable service to the city's low-income families. Moreover, mobile home parks house many of Westminster's elderly Vietnamese population. Given the historical context of Little Saigon and the city's Vietnamese diaspora. Protecting the seniors who founded these communities is instrumental to the preservation of the Vietnamese culture in Westminster. Sincerely, Dan Ma. And the last ecomment was from Tao Nguyen. She states, Dear Westminster City Council. I'm Tao Nguyen and I am advocating for public maps five oh three and five, and four oh four. Proposed by the Westminster Redistricting Committee. These maps are crucial to the fair representation of the city's mobile home park residents. As one of Westminster's few remaining affordable housing options. Mobile home parks provide an indispensable service to the city's low-income families. Moreover, mobile home parks house many of the Westminster elderly Vietnamese population. Given the historical context of Little Saigon and the city's Vietnamese diaspora. Protecting the seniors who founded these communities is instrumental to the preservation of Vietnamese culture in Westminster. Thank you. That concludes the ecomment portion. And I did have a few requests to speak in advance, so I'll be calling those. The first one was Lina Nguyen. Or Lisa Nguyen, I'm sorry.
Hello, Dear Westminster City Council, my name is Lisa Nguyen and I'm writing as a resident of Westminster's First District. The lived experiences and stories of community members are valuable and representative of the day-to-day life in Westminster. Today, I come to you as a longtime resident of the city and as a member of the Westminster Redistricting Committee. We have been meeting since June and have identified different communities of interest, especially in regard to the Vietnamese community here. Today, we propose map four oh four for the four district map and map five oh three for the five district map. As both of these maps give proper representation to valuable communities within our city. Some of these communities include mobile home park residents, the Latinx population, low-income Vietnamese population, apartment residents. Through this current redistricting process, we want to guarantee that these maps can fully support and uplift our most valuable communities. We propose a four district map with these priorities in mind. We propose that District A maintains the integrity of a long-time, single-family homeowner community west of the Golden West Street. And lives along the four oh five freeway together. We propose that District B creates a compact district that keeps low-income Latino and Vietnamese residents. Who primarily live in apartments, mobile homes, and single-family homes together. East of the Golden West Street up to Beach Boulevard and north of Hazard Avenue. This district contains the largest CVAP Latino population at twenty-seven point sixty percent in and around Siggler Park. District C creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district with the highest CVAP Vietnamese population of sixty-nine point thirty-nine percent of Vietnamese residents. This district includes numerous communities of interest. Much of it is low-income communities, working-class communities, mixed-immigrant status families, monolingual communities, tenant communities. And housing cost burdened communities. For District D maintains the integrity of single-family homeowners, apartment, and mobile home residents together. This district contains the second-largest CVAP Vietnamese population at sixty-two point one percent. This district also keeps together the second-tied largest mobile home park concentration with three in total. Next, we propose the five district map with these priorities in mind. We propose that District A maintains the integrity of an affluent, long-time, single-family homeowner community west of Golden Street, Golden West Street together. And also for District B to create a compact district that keeps low-income Latinos and Vietnamese residents together. Who primarily live in apartments, mobile homes, and single-family homes. Across the Golden West Street up to Beach Boulevard and Hazard Avenue. District C also creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district in a district that contains the second-largest mobile home park concentration with four in total. And this district contains a large number of low-income Vietnamese, white, and Latino population. We propose that District D creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district with the highest CVAP Vietnamese population of seventy-one point sixty-three percent. Of Vietnamese residents. And this district, district also includes numerous communities of interest. There are low-income, working-class, mixed-immigration status, monolingual, and tenant communities, and also housing cost burdened communities. And districts, this district also contains the largest concentration of mobile home parks with eight in total. This district also keeps the core of Bolsa Avenue together. Lastly, District E maintains the integrity of single-family homeowners, apartment, and mobile home residents together. This district contains the second-largest CVAP Vietnamese population at sixty-three point thirty-three percent. This district also keeps together the third-largest mobile home park concentration with two in total. We must keep our communities together. I strongly urge you to adopt the maps created by the Westminster Redistricting Committee that includes these communities of interest. And to keep these various communities of Westminster intact. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is Nikki Nguyen.
Hello, dear members of the city council, my name is Nikki Nguyen. And I am a resident of Westminster's First District as well as a member of the Westminster Redistricting Committee. As many folks have mentioned, we are a group of Westminster residents who have been regularly meeting for more than half a year. Researching and working towards advocating for an equitable redistricting for our communities. Today, we are meeting to review and discuss potential maps for redistricting. And I strongly urge you to move forward with map number four oh four for the four district map. And map number five oh three for the five district map. These two both give proper representation to vital and significant communities within our city. Specifically, one, mobile home park residents. Two, the Latinx population. Three, the low-income Vietnamese population. And four, apartment residents. In the past iterations of our city maps, the district lines have fallen short of adequate, adequately taking into account the geographic locations. Of the aforementioned, aforementioned communities. And we see this current redistricting process as a way to more fully support the critical communities of Westminster. We propose the four district map, number four oh four, with these priorities in mind. Namely, District A maintains the integrity of long-time, single-family homeowner community west of Golden West Street. And lives along the four oh five freeway together. District B creates a compact district that keeps low-income Latino and Vietnamese residents who primarily live in apartments. Mobile homes and single-family homes together east of Golden West Street up to Beach Boulevard and north of Hazard Avenue. This district contains the largest CVAP Latino population at twenty-seven point sixty percent in and around Siggler Park. And this district also keeps together the second highest, the second-tied largest mobile home park concentration at three total. District C creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district with the highest CVAP Vietnamese population. Of sixty-nine point three-nine percent of Vietnamese residents. This district includes numerous communities of interest, including low-income communities, working-class communities. And mixed-immigration status families, as well as monolingual communities, tenant communities, and housing cost burdened communities. This district contains the largest concentration of mobile home parks with nine total. This district also keeps the core of Bolsa Avenue together. Lastly, for the four district map. District D maintains the integrity of single-family homeowners, apartment, and mobile home residents together. This district contains the second-largest CVAP Vietnamese population at sixty-two point one percent. This district also keeps together the second-tied largest mobile home park concentration with three total. For District Map Five, number five oh three. We put these forward because District A maintains the integrity of, like District Four, our District Four version map. Affluent, long-time, single-family homeowner communities west of Golden West, Golden West Street. District B creates a compact district that keeps low-income Latino and Vietnamese residents who primarily live in apartments. Mobile homes and single-family homes together east of Golden West Street up to Bull, Beach Boulevard and north of Hazard Avenue. This district contains largest CVAP Latino population at twenty-nine point two-nine percent in and around Siggler Park. District C creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district in a district that contains the second-largest mobile home park concentration with four total. And also has a large number of low-income Vietnamese, white, and Latino population. District D creates a Federal Voting Rights Act compliant district with the highest CVAP Vietnamese population of seventy-one point six-three percent. Of Vietnamese residents. This district includes numerous communities of interest, including low-income, working-class, mixed-status families. Monolingual, tenant, and house, housing cost burdened communities. With a total of eight mobile home parks, this has the largest concentration of mobile home parks throughout the city. This district also keeps intact the core of Bolsa Avenue. Lastly, District E maintains the integrity of single-family homeowners, apartment, and mobile home residents together. And contains the second-largest CVAP population of Vietnamese people at sixty-three point three-three percent. And is the third-largest mobile home park concentration with two. We must give proper representation to residents who are most at risk of being left behind, neglected, exploited, and more in this new phase. Of Westminster's development trajectory. And I strongly urge you to adopt the maps put forth by Westminster, the Westminster Redistricting Committee. Number four oh four and five oh three. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Vincent Tran.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, council. My name is Vincent Tran. I'm the community engagement coordinator for VietRise and one of the leads of the Westminster Redistricting Committee. A committee of Westminster residents who have met since June of twenty twenty-one. Ensure Westminster residents are able to equitably participate in the redistricting process. I want to speak in support of the two maps we've submitted. Public map five oh three and public map five oh, I'm sorry, four oh four. In building these maps, we ensure that all communities of interest in Westminster with commonalities such as socioeconomic backgrounds. Living situation and language needs were kept whole and would have the strongest ability to vote for the candidates of choice. In particular, we paid close attention to ensure that low income and housing, housing burden. In particular, uh we pay close attention to ensure that low-income and house, housing burdened communities such as apartment and mobile home renters will be kept together to strengthen their voice, ensure that their needs are prioritized by their representatives. Westminster is a thriving and dynamic community that is growing more and more vibrant each year. Um what makes the city special and unique is its housing affordability and status as the capital of Vietnamese overseas community. This past weekend, and as the vet parade marched along Bolsa Avenue, we not only saw the vibrant Vietnamese businesses, but also over five mobile parks primarily occupied by Vietnamese, Latino, white seniors who have lived in Westminster for decades. These residents typically are low-income. They rely on in-language services offered by the numerous businesses in Westminster and on Bolsa Avenue, such as visiting doctors' offices, law, lawyer offices, and also getting their daily necessities at the numerous Vietnamese grocery stores uh in and around Bolsa Avenue. Um and as rent increases uh and Westminster develops, these residents are at risk of being displaced, and it's necessary to ensure uh their voices are represented on this council. And many of these residents are refugees. You know, they came here um after nineteen seventy-five looking for uh their new home. Um and many of them decided to live in Westminster um and, you know, they are the core, they are the heart of the community. Um and we shouldn't, um we should provide them best ability to have their voices heard and other needs addressed. But the current Westminster City Council district maps splits the mobile home parks, particularly on Bolsa Avenue, into two districts, um currently District Three and Four, which limits their representation on the council. Thus, please ensure uh our most vulnerable communities are kept together um by keeping the majority of mobile home parks located on Bolsa Avenue, um also on Westminster Avenue together. Um I believe the public map uh five oh three and the public map four oh four ensures that the vast majority of these mobile home residents um will have representation and will be able to continue to thrive uh for years to come. Uh so please choose uh map, uh public map five oh three and public map uh four oh four. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening. This testimony is about the draft four district maps. I will be providing separate testimony about the draft five district maps. Any one of these four district uh draft maps will be a vast improvement over the current four district map, which should have never been adopted by this council in twenty nineteen. Priorities should be given to ensuring both sides of Bolsa Avenue between Magnolia Street and Booker Street, AKA Little Saigon, are kept together in a single district, specifically the district with the highest possible concentration of Vietnamese voters. Vietnamese voters must be provided as a distinct advantage and opportunity to select someone to represent their unique interests in the Little Saigon area. Maps four oh one, four oh two, and four oh three achieve both of these goals. District Four in all three of these maps puts Little Saigon solidly into District Four, which is up for election in twenty twenty-two, with the highest concentration of Asian voting age population and Asian registered voters of any of the four district draft maps that were submitted, seventy-two to seventy-four percent. The city has begun to engage this community through the Little Saigon Blueprint for Investment Plan with the eventual goal of creating a specific plan for the area. The voters and businesses, business owners in Little Saigon deserve the opportunity to elect someone in the next election, twenty twenty-two, that will represent their unique interests during this process. All three of these maps preserve the city's adopted east-west boundary of Beach Boulevard. The police department, city staff, and residents frequently use the terms west side and east side to identify and define specific areas of the city. All of the districts in these three maps are contiguous, compact, run north-south consistently, are easy to understand with clear identifiable boundaries, and are similarly sized geographically. In each map, all four districts are majority-minority districts, and there is no packing of any minority group into just a single district. The Westminster Redistricting Coalition who submitted map four oh four will find the largest concentration of mobile home parks should be kept in two districts with one district containing a majority of the city's mobile home parks. Maps four oh one, four oh two, and four oh three actually exceed the coalition's goal and their map four oh four in doing just that, with fifty-three to fifty-nine percent of the city's mobile home parks concentrated in District Four versus fifty-three percent in District Three of their map four oh four. These three maps also meter exceed the coalition's goal and map four oh four in keeping low-income apartment dwellers together, especially in the primarily Latino areas around Sigler Park and the primarily Vietnamese areas along Bolsa Avenue. These three maps also exceed the coalition's goal and map four oh four in keeping the higher-income, single-family-owned homes together in District One by several percentage points. Map four oh four's District One is not compact, is much larger geographically than the other districts, and awkwardly reaches all the way across town by passing one population for another. Map four oh four also shifts a large number of voters into different election years, disenfranchising many and possibly disrespecting voter choice. District One in particular provides a large number of voters in the current, that are in the current districts two and three, who just voted in twenty twenty to vote again in twenty twenty-two, while causing many of the voters in the existing district one to wait another two years until twenty twenty-four to vote, when they should have been voting in twenty twenty-two. In D C, submitted maps four oh four and four oh five. These two maps have the highest total population deviation of the four district maps submitted. District Three and Four in both of these maps have the largest total populations. If the city succeeds in annexing all or part of Midway City in the near future, these two districts will grow even more. Future population growth consideration is a requirement. Map four oh five is problematic. District Four reaches across, reaches all the way across town from the farthest east point of the city at Ward Street, all the way to Golden West Street in the middle of the western half of the city. This could be construed as an attempt to dilute and bypass the lower-income Asian population on the far east side in order to reach a distant chunk of a wealthier white population and households on the west side. Map four oh six is also problematic. One side of Bolsa Avenue between Magnolia Street and Bouchard Street within Little Saigon is in District Three, and the other side is in District Four. This area is a well-defined community of interest and should remain in a single district if at all possible. The only advantage maps four oh five, four oh four, four oh five, and four oh six have over maps four oh one, four oh two, and four oh three is the ever-so-slightly higher Hispanic Latino voting age population in District Two. Just two percentage points difference, twenty-eight percent versus twenty-eight percent. I'm sorry, twenty-eight versus twenty-six percent. Maps four oh one, four oh two, and four oh three more than make up for that, though, by having a significantly higher percentage of Hispanic Latino voters in one of the two surrounding districts, either one or three, providing this group more than one district from which to potentially elect their representative. This avoids any semblance of packing, yet also does not constitute cracking. Both of these terms were defined by the U S Supreme Court's ruling in the two thousand and four case Biaf versus Juvalier. So, in summary, I urge the council to adopt map four oh one, four oh two, or four oh three for the reasons stated above as the city's four district map. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Wang Nguyen.
Hello, um and thank you for this opportunity. Uh my name is Eaton Nguyen, and I am a resident of Westminster's Worth District. And I would like to encourage support for public maps five oh three and four oh four as proposed by the Westminster Redistricting Committee. As previously mentioned, maps five oh three and four oh four were developed with community input over the course of more than half a year. These maps reflect the lived experience of key communities of interest, communities who are stakeholders in the outcome of the redistricting and are your constituents. These communities include those who are low-income, racial minorities, and people of color, working families, and people living in mobile home parks. The two proposed district maps, number five oh three or four oh four, these maps better represent interests of these communities, particularly those who live in mobile home parks. As a member of the Vietnamese-American community in Westminster, I know that these mobile parks are home to many of the elderly Vietnamese-Americans living in the city of Westminster. They are, uh we are, we are very much community of refugees and migrants. And as such, our heritage and history lie in the knowledge and experiences of that elderly Vietnamese generation. Westminster is situated centrally in what we call Little Saigon, a place with a name that harkens not only to our identities as Vietnamese-Americans, but also our history as refugees from South Vietnam. It is in a site of historical significance that, as members of this community, we have obligation to protect. Protecting the seniors, who are perhaps the most vulnerable within our community, is in part a moral responsibility. Maps adopted should ensure that their homes remain their homes as these seniors are essential to the preservation of what we call Little Saigon. I strongly encourage the City Council to adopt either of these maps. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Juliana Fan.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um my name is Juliana Fan, and I am a redistricting intern at VietRise. I have worked closely with the Westminster Redistricting Committee to make sure that the maps that are chosen and adopted in this redistricting process are representative of the communities of interest in Westminster. In particular, we were interested in low-income Latinx communities, people who live in mobile home parks, the low-income Vietnamese population, refugee populations, and many other populations and communities of interest in Westminster. This map was take was, these maps were created for numbers four oh four and five oh three in the efforts of making, of making sure that those people were heard and were part of the process and that their votes would be considered more, um would be considered more seriously in the elections to come. We hope that these maps will be adopted so that we will make sure that those people get their presentation they need. And in particular, as a Vietnamese-American living in nearby Winter Park, the city of Westminster means a lot to me and my culture and my family and the community I'm involved in. So I want to make sure that the people, they are able to preserve that culture and that the people that are at risk and the people that are under served in the city are able to get the help they need. Thank you.
Alright, so do we have any speaker uh for four district map before I ask for five district map?
So this is the last call. If anybody else would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Thank you. Alright, I don't see any hand raised for four district maps. So now, I'd like to ask any member from the public, have any comment for five district map?
So our first speaker would be Terry Rains.
Good evening. This testimony is about the draft five district maps. Most of these five district draft maps would be a vast improvement over the current four district map, which, again, should never have been adopted by this council in twenty nineteen. Having five districts will greatly improve the diverse representation opportunities for our rep, our residents. But creating a five district map using the same reasoning as the four district map is a bit challenging, especially not having the interactive tool or the demographic percentages available to us until the map submission deadline, until after the map submission deadline. I think ultimately the best five district map will be one that incorporates characteristics from several of these draft maps. Each of these five district draft maps have pluses and minuses, and none are perfect, at least not yet. I like maps five oh one, and five oh two, and five oh four visually. District Three in each of these maps is centered around the city's recognized central point, Beach Boulevard. All of the districts in these three maps are contiguous, compact, run north-south consistently, are easy to understand, and are similar-sized geographically. That finger you see pointing west in uh District Five on maps five oh one and five oh two actually preserves the integrity of the neighborhood west of Pentecola Street and east of Burning Tree Street between St. Andrews Avenue and Palos Verdes Avenue. All districts are majority-minority districts, and there is no packing of any minority group into a single district. However, none of these three maps keep both sides of Bolsa Avenue between Magnolia Street and Brookhurst Street, AKA Little Saigon entirely in a single district, but they do come close to doing so. On the other hand, map five oh three submitted by the Westminster Redistricting Coalition and map five oh five submitted by N D C do keep both sides of Bolsa Avenue between Magnolia and Brookhurst, AKA Little Saigon, in a single district. District Four in map four, five oh three, and District Five in map five oh five. Four of the five districts have a district with an Asian voting population of seventy percent or above, with District Five of map five oh five at the highest with seventy-four percent. As mentioned earlier, Vietnamese voters must be provided a distinct advantage and real opportunity to elect representatives to represent their unique interests in the Little Saigon area. Map five oh three has the highest concentration of mobile home parks. The five oh three, the highest concentration of mobile home parks in a single district with forty-seven percent of the city's parks in District Four, followed by forty-one percent in District Five of maps five oh one, five oh two, and five oh four. All five maps preserve the highest concentration of lower-income Hispanic Latino households around Sigler Park in District Two with Hispanic Latino citizen voting age populations of twenty-eight to twenty-nine percent. N D C's map five oh five appears to be an anomaly compared to the other maps, both in design and demographics. The weight of the districts or numbers seems really odd reading left to right. The entire four oh five quarter is just in two districts, one and three. District Three is virtually twice the size geographically of District Four and is spread out over most of the southernmost portion of the city. A candidate for District Three would be at a distinct disadvantage having to campaign over such a broad geographic area compared to candidates in other districts. District Three also awkwardly reaches for and pulls Westminster Mall on the west side of the city into a district primarily based on the east side. District Three also creates a second wealthy white district with a white voting age population of thirty-three percent in addition to District One at forty-eight percent, and household incomes over seventy-five thousand at fifty-one percent in addition to District One with fifty, fifty-nine percent. Now, this could conceivably be challenged by voter rights activists. It would be great news, though, for the often ignored white minority voters in this city. I urge council to adopt a five district map that is most consistent in appearance, methodology, and reasoning with whatever four district map council chooses to adopt and vice versa. Regardless of what is decided tonight for item six point one, whether to include a five district map with the June elective mayor ballot measure or not, it is imperative that this council discuss and adopt a four district map at the same time they adopt a five district map. There should be reasonable consistency and similarity in the thought process, methodology, and reasoning for selecting a four district map as selecting a five district map to the extent possible. In my opinion, the city attorney's office and staff have really dropped the ball in this redistricting process. There have been countless delays, errors, and omissions, and an overall lack of responsiveness and transparency to the public. In other words, too little, too late. Remember the old saying, "Lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on our part"? Except that it has, which is unacceptable. Whichever map this council adopts, it is us, the voters and residents of this city, that will have to live with it for the next ten years. Keep in mind, selecting a map must have nothing to do with your personal political agendas or where you live or your political aspirations. State law actually forbids considering incumbent impacts. I implore each and every one of you to take this process seriously. Do your homework, study the maps, ask a lot of questions, and most importantly, listen to us, the people of this city. It is your job to serve us, not the other way around. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Kai Mendel.
Uh hi. Yes, uh first of all, I'd like to thank and commend Councilmember Tidol for proposing switching to a rotating mayor system and Councilmembers Kimberly Hall and Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo for supporting it. And I hope you all will do your best to put this measure on the ballot in June uh this year so voters can decide if they want to keep electing their mayor direct, directly or not uh this November. Uh I hope you all would find it deep in yourself to come to a just and wise decision to pick a map, or for now, two maps, that would give us the chance to vote for, for our council members representative, that would represent all of our residents logically, fairly, and effectively. Happy, happy Lunar New Year. Wishing everyone a healthy, happy, and prosperous year of the tiger. God bless. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, so do we have any, any other speaker?
So this is the last call. If anybody else would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Nếu có quý vị nào còn muốn phát biểu, xin quý vị hãy dơ tay lên cho chúng tôi biết là quý vị muốn phát biểu. Quý vị có thể dơ tay lên bằng cách chạm vào cái biểu tượng của cái hình bàn tay ở trên màn hình của quý vị. Xin cảm ơn. Thank you.
Alright, so I see no other speaker, so now is the time for mayor and city council to discuss. So is there any question from a member of the council regarding any map? Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Dr. Levitt. Dr. D, on the maps that the coalition put together, 404 and 503, how do they compare with, with the meeting the criteria compared to the other maps?
Sure. Well, first of all, I'll say that we believe that all of the maps do meet the basic legal requirements in that they are population balanced and meet the contiguity standard. You know, in terms of some of the other criteria, you know, I, you know, I could comment on specific aspects of a community, if there's a community in mind that you, you want to know more about. That is the most subjective criteria. I would say that they certainly are legal and valid maps. I would say that there is one place or a couple places in 503 where it doesn't quite follow the major roads, and I'm not sure if that's just a population issue for the deviation, for example, between districts four and five. Why District four doesn't go all the way down to McFadden and Magnolia? You know, and I would just, you know, and I know it has a very low deviation and maybe there's some space to take that district just down to that major road to, to, to comply with that criteria. But if they're doing that for a valid reason, then, then, then of course, that's, that's a valid concern. And of course, I think that demographically speaking, their numbers look very close to the NDC map numbers as well.
I just had a concern with that map as far as like, it seems like it's more boundless as far as the business district in the Little Saigon area. And I see what your point is about not going straight across. Seeing a few of our other maps don't do that as well. I don't see.
And I admit that I'm kind of quibbling at some of the edges where, you know.
Yeah.
But, and I think that there might could certainly be valid reasons for that particular division. But that's, those are the only thing that stood out. I think the numbers look very comparable to the other maps. And particularly very comparable to the NDC drafts you have in front of you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright, is there any other council member? Have any have any other concerns or have any question either for staff or anything regarding the map? Alright, I don't see anything. I don't see any other concerns from the, on the city council, so.
Excuse me, sorry, sorry to interrupt there. I have another question for Mr.
Please, please.
Dr. Levitt. Is there any, I, I, one of the callers mentioned something about how some of the districts, like for instance, on map 402, there's part of that map, a certain part like for Cascade Park area, that, that area right now is currently in the, in the District two area with the current four district map. Is there anything about, like they voted a last election and then they would, they would vote again for a different, for District one now, you know, is there anything, any concerns there as far as them originally voting for District two and now they'll be voting for District one?
Sure, and I think, you know, I think, I want, you know, I'd really like to focus the conversation tonight, especially on the bigger picture. Because some of these, like 402, do represent a substantial change across the map from the current districts. And so essentially, all four districts look quite different in 402, for example, and in many of the maps than the current four district maps. And so there certainly could be a concern at the very end of the process. If you are choosing between two maps you think do an equally good job under the Fair Maps Act criteria, if one moves fewer people from a 2020 election cycle to a 2022 election cycle, or vice versa. There are people who are expecting an election next year moving to an election in 2024. That is a valid reason to pick between the final two maps, or say at the end of the process. But if you do adopt a map like 402, it would be because you think that major changes are needed to the current district map in order to comply with both federal and state law.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we don't have any other concerns or any question from member of the city council, so there.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I apologize. Kimberly Hall Barlow, Deputy City Attorney. We definitely do need the, the council this evening to confirm our scheduled fourth public hearing that we noted in your report. But it would be also, I think, very helpful to us if you have, if there are maps, for example, that you simply would like to completely eliminate, or if there are any kind of feedback on preferences or requests to make changes so that we could bring any proposed changes to you at your next public hearing.
Alright, so I appreciate that, so. In my own opinion, I think that the map, for one is, I think that is good. I think that it show the representation from community. And but I see only for me and 402 is all, is my second option, yes. If I have second option, so 401, 402, I think I'm okay with that, yes.
Before I make a comment, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the coalition for the redistricting for all their efforts. Seems like they've been working really hard since June of last year. So, you know, that's a really commitment of them and I really want to thank them and then, and the other residents who submitted maps for being involved. This is an important process. So I just want to thank, thank you guys for, for all your efforts. For me, I would like to, on the, on the four district maps, I would like to see us continue with 402 and 404. And, and then on the five, be 503. And I think it's 50 505. Those are the, my preferences on those two. Thank you.
May I ask, may I ask anyone from staff that what is a big difference between the map 401 and 404?
I think Dr. Levitt can address that.
Yes, for four council district map, what's the big difference?
Sure, um, those two maps are, you know, have some substantial differences to each other. 401 is a very vertical map. It follows mostly north-south divisions, other than where it needs to jog to get a bit of population. It uses Golden West and Edwards, Beach Boulevard, Magnolia as major division lines. And all four districts go from the north end of the city to the south end of the city. And in doing that, it creates a much, in many ways visually more cleaner map because it's very easy to follow where each of the districts is. 404 is trying to create more, you know, I guess, you know, almost could call it almost like quadrants because District one follows the 405 freeway all the way from the northwest corner of the city down to College Park where Huntington Beach kind of comes in there and then creates a southeastern area four. And, and the reason why both of these maps where they really differ is on some of the demographics. For example, if we look at the percentage of units that are rented, 401 has one district where renters are a majority of the population, District two, seventy-one percent rent. In map 404, we have two districts, now two and three, where renters are a majority. And so what it does is it segregates or perhaps divides more between the different kinds of housing. And that, that has some impact on other factors. For example, if we look at income in, you know, in, in, in map 401, we see that Area three is actually, you know, got a larger concentration of wealthier residents than Area four. In public map 404, it's actually Area four that has a higher concentration of wealthier residents than Area three. Larger percentage of the population were earning more than seventy-five thousand. And that plays down some of the other demographics as well. If 401 takes more of a cross-section, particularly on the eastern end of the city with districts three and four, map 404 has more of a division between the, the kinds of neighborhoods and communities in Area three and those in Area four.
Alright, I really appreciate your answer. Okay, I'm willing to include 404, yes. So, for me.
I'm okay with that.
Oh, 401, 402, and 404. That's, but that's, but we only, yeah.
Dr. Levitt, if, can you share the screen on the maps just for the public's view when we get a chance on the maps they decide?
And while he's doing that, can, can I clarify? So, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, it sounded like you, you want to keep 404 in the conversation. Is that correct?
No, I think after Dr. Levitt's explanation, it's I think I'm okay with removing that one.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
What?
I think the Vice Mayor is, is, is willing to get rid of 404. Are you interested in keeping it in the mix or, or taking it out?
I'm sorry, what was the question again? 404?
Yes, 404.
We're taking it out?
I want to, I want to include 404, so I want to include 1, 401, 402, and 404, yes.
You want to keep those in?
I want to give 401, 402, and 404, yes.
Got it, okay.
So on the, on the four district. Go ahead.
So I'd like to keep 401, 402, 403.
Yeah, I'm good with those.
I want to keep 104, 142, and 403.
I'd like to keep our 1, 4, 2, and 403.
Alright, so do we need any, do we need any motion to receive and file the, the comment on the public? And then we need to schedule for the next public hearing. And that would.
Do we know, do, do, do we know what we are gonna keep? Which map we're gonna keep for the four district map?
It, it sounded to me as though all of you, at least some of you, would, would want to keep 401, 402, 403, and 404 in contention. So.
I, I, yeah, I like to keep, I like to keep 401, 2, and 3, and then who else want to keep those three districts? Well, the reason, at least, the reason I, I like these districts, the map, because it skip the, the vote and opportunity to vote because apparently they already voted the last election. So the next, this, this election, the people have an opportunity to do it.
Right, so all of you were in support of 402, of keeping 402 in the mix. Four of you were in support of 401. 403 had three of you wanting to keep that in the mix. And 404 has at least one supporter in, in terms of retaining it in the mix. So if you are prepared to eliminate all the remaining maps, that would be an appropriate motion to make and then we can focus on those four.
So we're just, you talking about the four district maps right now, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to retain 401, 402, 403 right now and then get rid of the rest of the maps.
I'll second that on the four district maps.
Alright, so we have the motion and second to keep 401, 402, and 403.
It's just for, just for the record reason, I make the motion, I do not, I live in District two. And there's a man went to, you know, so I don't make this motion because I live in it and have an opportunity rerun for reelection. I, I have no district to run this year, so just want to clarify with the public.
Alright, so we have the motion and second on the floor.
Okay, so that motion was made by Councilmember Doe and second by Vice Mayor Monzo, and that was to retain 401, 402, and 403 maps and eliminate all other maps. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Alright, so do we need to have a motion to receive and all the input from, from the public too?
Yes, that would, that would be good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
Do we need to make a discussion on the, on the five district?
We'll, we'll, we'll get to that one in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, alright, just want to be sure.
Yep.
Alright, so, and then, so I'd like to, I'd like to move to receive and file all the input from member of the public.
Second.
Alright, we have the motion and second on the floor. Go please.
That was a motion made by Mayor Ta and a second by Councilmember Ho, and that was to receive and file input from the community. So Councilmember Doe? Councilmember Doe?
Yes, sorry, I have.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right.
Wonderful. Now, Mr. Mayor, if 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 the council would like to narrow. The five district maps by eliminating any of those that are on the table for consideration. That could help us move forward at the next public hearing.
Correct, so now is a five district map, yes.
Forward with five oh three and five oh five.
I'd like to add file two and then. Yeah. File two.
Okay, and are there any other five district maps that would we would like to retain in under consideration? If not, perhaps a motion would be in order?
I'd like to make the motion to. Retain file, was that file two and file?
Five oh two, five oh three, and five oh five.
I'll second that.
Would you please re repeat the motion, please?
Okay, well, just second, I'd like to re. Make a motion to retain file two.
Who's three and five?
File. Five oh four. And. Why three and five oh four?
My my second was. I will. Was with with the three and five.
Yeah, I wrote down five oh two, five oh three, and five oh five.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's my motion.
Okay.
I have a question regarding. Regarding five oh one, Dr. Justin Levitt. What's the difference between map five oh one and five oh two?
Sure, the only difference between five oh one and five oh two. Is that five oh two carves out this little area. Between Newland Street north of Oasis and moves that to District Three. Rather than in District Four, in in five oh one, the boundary simply follows Newland Street. That's the only difference between the two maps.
Very subtle.
And they're submitted by the same individual.
Okay, thank you.
Two, four, and five, is that what I heard?
It's five oh two, five oh three, and five oh five.
We have a motion and a second.
Right, we have the motion and a second on the floor. So five oh one, five oh two, and five oh five, am I am I correct?
Yes.
Five oh two, five oh three, and five oh five.
Okay. Two, three, and five, okay.
Yes.
So that motion was made by Councilmember Doe and second by Vice Mayor Monzo, and that was to keep map five oh two, five oh three, and five oh five, and that was to eliminate all other maps. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Upstaying.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Upstaying.
That motion carried three zero two with Councilmember Nguyen and Mayor Ta abstaining.
All right, so now I need a motion to receive and file the input from member of the public for five district map.
Motion to approve.
Motion to. Second.
Okay. So we have the motion and second to receive and file input from. Members of the public for five district map.
That motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo and second by Councilmember Doe to receive and file that input, so Councilmember Doe?
You know, before I vote, I'd like to make a short comment, you know, I think the committee for. The hard work and the community input for the drawing the map. And just so you know, I did not include District, the the map four oh four, even though. With that real line that created that will put me in a position to re-earn for reelection in in November, District One. But I was, I did not want to include that map, so, yes, thank you.
So Member Ho?
I was listening to Councilmember Doe's comments, and what are we voting on?
To receive and file input from the community for the five districts.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Okay, so now is a time for.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, one final comment, I just want to make sure to reiterate for the public that the next public hearing on the on the maps will be February twenty-third.
Okay, so we already have a day.
Yes, and and that is, that is the date unless there is some different direction from council this evening.
All right, so that's all we have for this public hearing item, am I correct? Okay, thank you so much. Let's see, okay, so. Next. Public hearing item. Consideration. Yes.
We actually have to go back now because we didn't, we need to finish oral communications and then the consent calendar.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, yes.
No worries.
All right, so now we have the consent calendar. All manner of listener.
Mayor, if I may. There was a participant that had their hand raised prior to the closure of oral communications that I overlooked.
Okay, so please. Is that for the public hearing item?
For oral communications.
Oh, oral communication, I'm sorry, okay, please.
Okay, so. Speaker would be Camila Overbeek.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Camila Overbeek, resident of Westminster, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd first like to say thank you to Mr. Acosta for all your hard work, and may you be successful and happy in your new journey. Second, I'd like to address an ongoing issue I see within our police department, especially as it pertains to the TUT parade this past weekend. On October seventh, twenty twenty-one. I sent an email to the interim city manager regarding the police department's failure to wear masks during this pandemic, despite issues such as this being addressed. In the Westminster Police Department Policy Manual. Chapter ten, section ten fifteen, is specifically titled Communicable Diseases. More specifically, section ten fifteen point four point one subsection F. States all members are expected to use good judgment and follow training procedures related to mitigating the risks associated with communicable disease. This includes but is not limited to using a face mask. Or shield if it is reasonable to anticipate an exposure to an airborne transmissible disease. I'm pretty certain that a pandemic involving a communicable airborne droplet disease would fall under that standard. If we all recall from the January twelfth meeting. Mr. Robert Acosta publicly stated that our PD had been hit hard with COVID. Resulting in at least twenty overtime shifts having to be covered and officers working outside of their class. If we use the lowest pay grade for an officer, meaning brand new out of the academy. The bare minimum cost to taxpayers is over eleven thousand dollars. And now, over this past weekend, at the very crowded TUT parade, many pictures of officers were posted and not a single mask could be seen. Ironically, the private security officers wore them. It feels as though the PD is wasting taxpayer money to suit their own agenda and beliefs. Perhaps if the Police Officers Association had to repay the city for overtime pay due to officers not following the manual and using basic mitigating methods. To to curb the spread of COVID, we would see a difference in their behavior. If it's clearly stated in a manual what officers should be doing. Why are they not doing it? Are they above the rules? I would also like to ask that a council member pull the warrant register and discuss the city attorney's billing and payments made. First and foremost, someone should ask if the fees for the two attorneys that were left on hold for five hours during the January twelfth meeting were removed. Taxpayers should not be liable for the irresponsible behavior of the city attorney. Christian, you knew they were on hold, and yet you allowed it to continue with no regard for taxpayer money. This city cannot afford to pay your office over fifty thousand dollars every month. For residents who are unaware, we've paid nearly three hundred thousand dollars to Jones and Mayor since December twenty twenty-one. And in closing, I'd like to remind this council that despite not being in person. We can see you and you're being recorded. We can see when community members are addressing you and you're busy texting away on your phone, and I'd be happy to submit the screenshots. And all the other receipts from every time you're caught. It's also quite rude that members of this council can't seem to be bothered to turn on their cameras and show the constituents that they're actually present and listening. This behavior is unacceptable, and the residents deserve so much better than what you're giving. Thank you for your time.
Last call for speakers, anybody would like to speak?
Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have Concern Canada, a matter of listener, Concern Canada, I consider routine. It may be approved by a single motion followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request. That specific items be removed from the Concern Canada for separate action or this or this discussion. I'd like to pull item three point two. For separate vote. Three point two, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out the three point five and address. Camilla, we're talking about the. All the check we pay for Jones and Mayor.
Okay, so may I have the motion to prove the rest, but three point two and three point five.
I'd like to pull three point six, please.
All right, so people six. All right, so may I have the motion to approve? The rest?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have the motion and second to approve Concern Canada, but item three point two. Three point five and three point six.
That motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo and a second by Councilmember Doe. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, so now item three point two.
All along that I recuse myself from the EU discussions, so I want to maintain that, so I want to recuse myself of not voting for this item.
And so. So we have the motion for people two. Do we have a second?
Well, we have the second.
My second.
All right, we have the motion and second for people two.
And that was a motion made by Councilmember Doe and second by Councilmember Ho, and that was to adopt ordinance number twenty-five seventy-five entitled. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster amending Title Seventeen Land Use of the Westminster Municipal Code. To allow properties developed within accessory dwelling unit and or junior dwelling unit to expand the width of their driveways by five feet, read by title only way for the reading. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember, I recused himself, Vice Mayor Monzo?
No.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried three one one with Vice Mayor Monzo voting no and Councilmember Nguyen recusing himself.
All right, item three point five.
Could somebody. Address the issue that was brought by. The public comment that the warrant register would the check pay the fifty thousand dollars to. General Mayor, do we have a check and balances, make sure that those bill. Inconsistent with the city policy?
When we receive the bills from Jones and Mayor, they're distributed to the departments who worked on the items with the attorney's office. And reviewed by each department and signed off and then processed for payment.
Thank you very much. Move to proof.
Second. All right, we have the we have the motion and second to prove this item. Three point five.
So that motion was made by Councilmember Doe and second by Mayor Ta, and that was to receive and file. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, item three point six.
The question I have about this item is that I don't see any appraisals. Written here as part of the process. That's really a lot of the problems we were having was lack of appraisals. Before purchase before. So we have no idea what the market bears, we just know people are offering left and right without knowing. If their if their offer is below market or not, and I think we need, we gotta include that.
Yeah, and and actually, it it is it is addressed in here in in terms of the process and. This this item here is in response to your request to to lay out the process that is in place for selling property. Both before the the current law and prior to the surplus lands act. I have Russ Hildebrand on the line who I asked to prepare this. To provide this 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 update, the first item that it gets to deals with establishing the fair market value, and that's where something like. That would come into play. So Russ, maybe could you address that in regards to our obligation to establish a fair market value?
Well, is it listed somewhere here? Am I, I'm not seeing that.
It's in the. Excuse me just a moment.
In my mouth?
Uh, yeah.
In the memo. Under A one, second paragraph.
All right.
First page.
So you're not, there there's no statute that requires an appraisal be done. Is the short answer.
That is fine, establishing fair market value is. You know, that that could include an appraisal, it could be a drive-by, it could be whatever appraisal you have that you can. You 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 could use to establish the fair market value.
Yes, we we absolutely have to establish the fair market value. And the reason for that. Is that we have to make sure that if the property is sold for less than fair market value, that there's actually a valid public purpose. So, you know, if, why why is it being sold for less in a in a particular instance? So we we know what it's worth, and then we know what it's being transferred for, and then the council makes a determination that it's serving the public interest for, and then explains why. But in most cases, you are going to sell it for the fair market value or maybe more. But if for some reason you do sell it, say to an affordable housing project, there might be a justification for giving them a a decent or better price on it because they're building affordable housing, that might be one example. But there is an obligation that you establish that how you establish fair market value. Could be done in a variety of ways, one of which could be gathering sales comps or giving an appraisals and other. I don't know, Russ, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Well, a a commercial real estate broker's opinion is oftentimes used. Which is simply, as you said, you know, they're going to gather up similar properties they're familiar with. It's the basic starting point for an appraisal, it's just not. It's just not, just doesn't have the formality and the cost of doing an appraisal.
I get, I get all that. The only thing is, the reason I'm asking for this is because I, I did not see this done at all in the past. So it just kind of puzzled me that we would be dealing, you know, buying, selling real estate without any appraisal. So I just want to make sure something is in place this time. So I, I got it, that's fine. I'm not asking for a full-fledged appraisal where you have to pay by ten thousand dollars. I know for commercials, it could run around ten thousand dollars for an appraisal. So some kind of an appraisal to establish the fair market value is fine.
Let, let, let me, let me understand something, may I have a question? So, okay, so every city has this kind of practice, Mr. Hinderbrand? Yes, sir. So all the city by and large would apply this kind of good practice, not paying for appraisal to sell their property. Is that a fair statement or?
I, I think it's, it's a fair statement qualified by the amount of money involved, the accuracy desired by the city. You know, best practice would be to get an appraisal, a formal appraisal every time. Sometimes from time constraints or just the practicalities of, of cost, it's, it's not done, it's not required. But there should be a good record prepared. And every city is going to do this, prepare a good record on how fair market value was established. And you should see that in your staff report when it comes to you.
You, you know, I would, and what I think, and I want to make clear is that because, you know, the city council and then what we have seen in the past is that when people want to sell it to their friends and whatnot, they tend not to do an appraisal or they don't bother to establish some fair market value. So I would like to make sure we, 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 you know, this, this council or any council, our council needs to understand and waive that. You know, so they need to come back and tell us, can we waive that? You know, we don't want, we don't feel like, we don't want to do an appraisal. But when you don't waive it and you just, you know, I want to hold the council accountable. So you need to make sure you have the permission of the council and bring that forth so that the council could say, yes, no, and wait a minute, you know, so that's what I want. So I, I just don't want those excuses like we've had in the past. So that's all I want.
I'm sorry.
That is fair.
Yeah, you got, Mr. Deputy City Attorney.
I, I was simply going to say that, that typically that discussion of, you know, before we dispose of property or acquire property, we would typically have a closed session to discuss the negotiations and how exactly, you know, the council would desire fair market value to be established. I believe staff would be presenting their intent and the path that they would intend to follow and ask for council direction in that closed session. So that would be the opportunity to listen to what's being offered up for the process to establish fair market value and to make the decision, all right, that sounds very reasonable. Or no, I think we should have a formal appraisal at that time. So that's typically when that decision comes into play.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I understand now. And I think that we, the council needs to agenda an item to staff as a policy, so authorize the staff or city manager to draft a official policy and take the council out of the appraisal process for ourselves of the city property. That way, because we, if we don't have a policy in place and we trust the city manager who have injected the seed a dime to, to, in good faith, sell the, the property and protect the interests of the city will be very difficult, especially in this city, this is a great city of Westminster where, you know, the influence and the, all that gonna be tremendous for our city manager to deal with it. So we need to have a staff of policy. So this is your baby. Councilwoman, maybe you want to agenda an item and, and set that in motion.
Yes, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think we need to, number one, hold, we have to have a policy in place and be able to hold someone or a group of people responsible. If we don't hold anybody accountable and just say, well, let's do it, well, there's nothing typical about our city. And I think that our city has not been acting in a typical manner. Because I, I mean, I do, I deal real estate every single day and I, you know, I just would not go and purchase whatever it is, you know, may it be, you know, any real estate deals without an appraisal. And I understand, we're not talking about what kind of appraisal and I, you know what, I just, I'm just wishing for some appraisal. Okay, and, and that is to be fair. Because in the past, we have sold properties grossly under market and we didn't, we weren't even aware. We, who is we? The ones who didn't do it on purpose, the ones who didn't even know that was going on. So I just think we've got to hold people's feet to the fire, hold people accountable. And so I, I, I would like to agenda that if we could, you know, put that on the agenda and speak about it at length another time. Yes.
So you got to put on the next, uh, next meeting?
We could, next, next meeting, or if you think the following meeting, then I'll leave it up to the city manager.
Well, we'll discuss, we'll discuss the, we'll discuss that later. For timing.
I, I really don't want to leave it to, I don't, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure we, we make it really clear what the protocol is. Because we don't want to say, we don't want to leave it for someone to make a decision subjectively and say, oh, well, I didn't think this one needs it. And, you know, it, it shouldn't be one person's decision. And I don't want the city manager to have that, you know, to, to, to have that prerogative to, you know, leave that off or not. Because then the city manager, I, who, I don't care who it is, I mean, it may not, Christine may withstand the pressure, but I'm talking about another city manager, you know, in the future. So we don't know, and to be fair, we're setting policies for, 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 for now and for the future. So, you know, I think it's fair to, to make it really clear before we, before we, you know, so we know who's breaking that process. We, we have to be really clear of the process first, and so we'll have that in black and white. And that's how we're going to make, make it really clear.
So I would propose that we come back with maybe a couple of options for the council to consider. Maybe either something like all, all sales would have to have a, an appraisal versus any sale over a certain amount must have an appraisal, or something like that. Just give you a couple of different options and then the council can decide.
And, and could you include an option where that policy must follow without the council intervening? Because it's, the policy will be no good if the council can decide to bypass it. Does that make any sense?
I can also make sure that we are not, we're just, we're talking in, for, you know, all properties. We're not singling out one property or another. This is just for our city to have better practice, better policy for, for our whole city as, you know. We're not singly not one, one, one property. This is a general issue for our whole city. So I just want to make that clear to the, to the community, that we're not singly now one, one particular property or another.
Yeah, I totally, totally agree with the Vice Mayor Calo Manzo. We set up a check and balances so that you know, gatekeeper, you will, to make sure that there will be no council discretion and everything will be followed according to the best practice. So that we have check and balances with, you know, again, it's not a single out, any particular transaction in the past or currently happening right now. We just want to set up a good policy, good practice, policy so that we can protect the city and keep check and balances. There's no one individual have the, the entire authority to make things happen without anyone not knowing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
With that, I would like to, I'm a motion to approve three point six, receiving, receiving file.
My second.
All right, so we have the motion and second to approve item people six.
That motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo and second by Councilmember Ho, that was to receive and file. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, so next item is public hearing item.
So actually, Mayor, if we may, we still have Deputy City Attorney Kim Barlow who's on for item six point one and our demographers, well, I believe our demographer, maybe we don't. But at least, at least Deputy City Attorney Kim Barlow. So we're wondering if council would, you know, move six point one prior to the public hearing, if that would be okay?
Yes, I think that really, yes. Second, so we have the motion and second to move six point one forward, yes.
Okay, and that motion was made by Councilmember Doe and second by Mayor Ta, and that was to move item six point one prior to public hearing item four point two. So Councilmember Doe?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
And this item is not a public hearing item. I just want to make sure of that, I just want to inform the public, yes.
Yes.
So item six point one, discussion whether to add five district map to June seven, twenty twenty two ballot measure concerning the office of elected mayor.
I have, I have questions. I have questions real quick. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Deputy City Attorney, Mr. Bala, Bala, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So we've brought this forward to the council this evening because sometimes when, when measures go on the ballot for districting or to change from a non-district city to a city district or in this case, to go from four districts with a directly elected mayor to five districts, sometimes a map is included in that. Now, before the reforms for, that allowed cities to, to go to districts without a vote in response to threats of litigation in particular, typically if a city wanted to go to districts, there would be a ballot measure and it would include a map. We're no longer required to do that, nor are we required to attach a map to, for example, the, the current ballot measure, which would eliminate the position of a directly elected mayor and therefore create five districts instead of four. For that reason, we have established the process through the, the district mapping to, to choose both a four district and a five district map in the event that the measure passes. However, we felt that it was important to bring it to you, to allow you to make the policy decision of whether you wanted to attach a map to the ballot measure itself. And it's really not a legal question. I can, I can tell you, you know, some of the advantages or disadvantages. Some people like to have a map so they can see what the outcome will be right there in front of them when they're voting on that measure. Other people might feel that while they want to, they're in favor of the measure, but they don't like the map, it will affect their vote or vice versa. They're opposed to the measure, but they do like the map. And so it is, it really is a policy call for the council of whether you would like to have us bring forward an amendment to the measure to specifically attach the five district map you ultimately choose, which we hope will happen on February twenty third, but we can't guarantee that. Or if you would like to leave it as it is and the five district map that, that you choose, if the measure passes, would, would then simply be the map that would, would be sent to the registrar and would take effect. So, but we did feel that it's, it's something that we should bring to you and let you decide rather than have this decision made at a staff level. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. Bala, if I, if I may, so let me understand something. You would like to ask the council whether or not to include the map, like which is a five district map or the four district maps or all of them?
Yeah.
With the, with the ballots, with the
It would be the five district map. And basically it would be, are, do you want to go to a five district voting system and, and approve this particular map? So the, 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 the one legal impact of that that I think I need to explain is when a, when a map is selected by the voters, it can't be altered except through the normal dicennial redistricting process.
So my question is, the five district map that we, you know, kind of like picked through the top three so far. So those map, which aside the four district map, has been going through the proper procedure of public hearing and it's perfectly meet the legal requirement to redrawn a district, is that correct? So there's no legal, there's no legal requirement for us to include the map into the ballots? Asking the voter to approve the five district?
That is correct, there is no legal requirement that we include the map.
Okay, and, and then the problem, if we have a voter approve that, then we cannot be alter or change unless we put it back on the ballot.
Except, yes, to change it between the dicennial census, yes. That's correct.
Thank, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Ms. Bartle, I don't remember when, is there any other cities that, you know, in other situations where a map is included in a, in a ballot?
Yes, before, yes, before the law was changed to allow the council to go to districts by ordinance rather than through a ballot measure, the map was always required to be attached. But we don't have to do that anymore because we typically don't go to the ballot to change two districts unless the at-large voting or whatever the voting system is, has, was actually put in place by the voters.
Okay, thank you.
If, if I may, I have one, one more questions for Ms. Bala. Okay, so the decision to put this on the agenda to ask the city council to make a decision, was it like a legal considerations or?
It, it was a question that, that I had raised with your city attorney as a decision that I felt, that we felt really should be made by the city council because it wasn't clear that you knew you had the option to do that. And so we wanted to make sure that you were aware of the option and some of the, you know, pros and cons, if you will, of doing that.
Okay, so is that a best practice for your law office to, to do this to all city? When you have redraw the, the district and go into a district and then you have to ask the council, whether or not the council want to include the maps in the ballot? Is that the best practice? Oh, this is a, this council was first council that you've ever applied to.
This is a, an unusual situation because of the ballot measure. Ordinarily, once, once the change to districts has been made Ordinarily, once, um, once the change to districts has been made, as, as it was in Westminster, you wouldn't have to have a map in front of the voters, uh, per se. Um, in this situation, because you would be switching from four districts to five districts. Um, and essentially you're allowing the voters to decide whether to make that switch. It's really optional for you to have the map attached to the measure. Um, it's a fairly unusual circumstance uh, to find, uh, oneself in and as a city. And so, um, I have to say this would be the first time I had to do it this particular way.
Okay. So in your, in your past experience, you never have to come across any city that from switches from um, four, five, or whatever, increase the district, uh, and go to rotating, uh, mayor system? Our city is the first one?
Yeah. We've had cities that prior to the change, uh, put districting on the ballot with a map attached. But this is the first time we've had one go from, potentially go from four, uh, to five.
For the plan. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure.
I, I think it's also complicated by the fact that we have this new law that requires it every ten years and that happens to fall right now. That, that's adding another complicating factor because we have to by April seventeenth adopt a new map. So it's kind of mixing two things, adopting a new four district map and putting a ballot measure on that might change it to five. So those are kind of unique circumstances.
I'm sorry, Christian, did you say new law or did I hear incorrectly?
Yeah, I think, um, the city attorney is referring to the Fair Maps Act, which, which is the new law. The, the, the redistricting to balance population every ten years is a, is, is a, is a normal process.
I thought that's, we, we've been doing that for the past few decades, right? I mean, it's not new.
No, the, having to redistrict every ten years, um, in response to the census is not new. Um, but doing it in the way we have been doing it under the Fair Maps Act, that is new.
Okay. I try to understand that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
But I have a question like, like you mentioned earlier, Ms. Uh, Balo, like, did she not, did she not the, uh, legal decision, but rather the policy decision? Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, got it.
So I have a question. Okay. I just want to be clear. So we don't have to include the map, which is the five district map with the measure.
That's correct.
Seven, right?
That is correct.
Uh, my prerogative would be not to include, simply because it will just confuse people and they may hesitate to vote. So that decision should have already been made. Uh, so that would be if I have my choice, then I would, I would move not to include the map with the, the measure. So if I hear you correctly and if I understood everything correctly, then i- if I don't have to include, then I think, um, that's good because I wouldn't want to confuse people. I just want them to vote yes or no on the measure. So the measure and measure alone. And so the map's already taken care of for that.
I'll second that. Um, simply because as Councilmember Doe stated earlier, um, we're already going through the, the process of multiple public hearings. And, and we have had, um, a good amount of, of community involvement. And I continue to, I think a lot of residents in Westminster, um, are, are good job. They're being involved in this redistricting process. So, um, I agree. We shouldn't have to put that on there. Um, so that's why I second it.
All right. So we have the motion and second on the floor. Not in lunar map, uh, along with the measure on the ballot.
Okay. And that motion was made by Councilmember Ho and second by Vice Mayor Monzo. So Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right. So now we go back to, uh, public hearing item.
Thank you all very much and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Public hearing item, consideration of the city Westminster housing and community development need in preparation of the fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three annual action plan. So, uh, open public hearing and may I have a staff report?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Debbie Carita, the interim community development director, and I have a brief, uh, uh, PowerPoint presentation for this item. Let me pull that up. This is the, um, first, this public hearing is the first step of a three-step process that the city council will conduct in order to approve and allocate the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds and the home funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Oh, sorry. Sorry, technical difficulties.
Okay, what do I do?
Now just. I apologize. Tonight's public hearing is one of two that will be held during this process. Tonight, we will focus on the review of the community needs and priorities. And then on March ninth, we'll come back to the council with a draft action plan and a CD, and the CDBG funding requests. And the council will begin the, uh, thirty-day public review period. And then we will return for a second public hearing on April thirteenth, where the council will close the thirty-day public review period and consider the adoption of the action plan. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to receive and file comments regarding the city's needs and priorities in preparation of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan. The comments will help prioritize the projects and programs for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The annual action plan, it contains a summary of the actions, activities, resources, the, and resources to address the priority needs and the specific goals of the city's twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four consolidated plan, which the council adopted in, uh, twenty twenty. The annual plan is required and reviewed by the, uh, uh, Department of Housing and Urban Development. And this is necessary for Westminster to receive its annual allocation of CDBG and home funds. And the city receives approximately one million dollars in CDBG and four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in home funds annually. When the city council adopted the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four consolidated plan, it identified five priority needs. Those were housing needs, community services needs, uh, parks and recreation facilities and infrastructure improvement needs, uh, together with other community development needs. For each of these priority needs, the, uh, plan identifies one or more goals. For housing, it is to sustain and strengthen our neighborhoods and to preserve existing and create new affordable housing opportunities. For community services, it's to support agencies that assist special need populations and to provide needed community services to low and moderate income persons. In parks and recreation facilities, the goal identified is to preserve existing and create new public facilities. And for infrastructure improvements, the goal is to provide needed infrastructure improvements in low to moderate income neighborhoods. And for other community development needs, the goal is to fund the administration and planning for housing and community development in order to implement the identified goals. In terms of our current action plan for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, in CDBG funds, there's approximately one point six million that can be separated into three major categories. Uh, the first is public services. Uh, the CDBG regulations only allow, uh, fifty percent, uh, maximum of the allocation for the year to be, uh, uh, accounted for in public services. For us, uh, for twenty twenty-one, there's approximately a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, divided amongst five programs. That includes the Family Resource Center, the Senior Outreach Program, the Summer Youth Program and Project Shu, which is an after-school, uh, tutoring program administered by, um, Community Services, together with the home-delivered meals through Meals on Wheels. Under the administration category, category, which, uh, the CDBG regulations allow a twenty percent maximum, uh, allocation towards, we fund the CDBG administration and our Fair Housing Foundation and HUD does require cities, uh, all cities to fund uh, fair housing services. Under community development projects, we have approximately one point two million, uh, that in, in the current fiscal year. They go towards street improvements, the multifamily, uh, rental inspection program that is run through the community department, development department, code enforcement operations. And then, uh, Liberty Park improvements and the multifamily rental rehab program that's part of our neighborhood pride efforts. On the home funds, we have administration that can be up to ten percent maximum. Uh, we have a tenant-based rental assistance program. That's a two-year program with a total of four hundred thousand dollars, um, allocated. And then we have approximately one point four million in twenty twenty, uh, in twenty-one, twenty-two that is set aside for, um, future affordable housing projects. Through the public hearing, our recommended action is for the mayor and city council to receive and file comments regarding the city's housing and community development needs in preparation of the action plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So this is an opportunity for the public and the council to offer comment, comments that confirm or complement the community priority needs that have been contained in the consolidated plan. This completes my presentation. Our staff, Michael Sun, our housing specialist, and I are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Well, I thank you so much for your presentation. If, uh, can you go back?
Oh, sure.
We just slide. Yes.
The last slide?
Uh, go back to, yes, one more slide, please.
Okay, the action?
Can you go back? Maybe go back one more. Yes.
Okay.
I, I just had a question.
Sure.
Uh, about, uh, the home administration, ten percent set aside for future affordable housing project is that for staff? So the thing, sort of funding we set aside in order to pay for staff with all the affordable housing project in the future. Am I correct?
Um, the administration of the ten percent maximum helps pay for the staff as well as a portion of, of, uh, contractor for the administration of, of this program. The set aside for future affordable housing project is one point four million. That, that is actually the money that's available for that project.
Thank you so much. Yeah. All right.
I think I have a, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Please.
I have, stay on this slide. Um.
Sure.
I had a question as far as the percentages. How is that figured out? Like, how much percentage goes to each category?
Uh, the percentages are a maximum in terms of the CDBG program. Uh, it's just, we noted that because those are the regulations. So it, it, no matter what you fund, you can only fund up to a maximum of fifteen percent, for example, towards public services. And that is true, a maximum of twenty percent towards administration. Uh, and those are just the regulations. So that's why we noted it there for your information.
So that's a state, state, uh, regulations or?
It's, it's part of the CDBG, CDBG program. So it's the federal HUD regulations.
Okay. I just think that we put a lot more into administrated, administration that we do to act services. Is there, um? No, it's fine. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Is there any, uh, the concerns for member of the city council before I ask for public comments? All right. I see none. So now we're time for public comment, please.
Okay. So I did receive one e-comment. So at this time I'll be reading the e-comment all by anyone wishing to speak. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand. If you could please interpret that. We'll come back and I'll read the e-comment. So this e-comment is from Irene Martinez and she states Meal, Meals on Wheels, Orange County would like to thank you all for your continued support for home-delivered meals program. It has been quite an incredible two years that has tested and made us all rise above to help those most at need in our communities. We continue to provide services through our modified lunch cafe congregate meal program known as Grab and Go Frozen Meals that can be picked up at the sides by seniors or their loved ones. We have also ramped up our Meals on Wheels Home Delivered Program, all while following social distancing and safety guidelines. Due to the incredible dedication and tireless work of our staff, combined with the unparalleled support and commitment of our city and nonprofit partners and the county, we have maintained high serving levels. We are currently serving sixty-seven seniors a day with our home-delivered meals program in the city of Westminster. During the last fiscal year twenty through twenty-one, we served a total of forty-six thousand nine hundred ninety meals, which is a twelve percent increase from the previous year. We also served a total of a hundred and nine clients in the city of Westminster. Participants of the program received three meals a day, five days a week by volunteer drivers. The meals are nutritionally balanced by a registered dietitian and based on a suggested voluntary contribution of five dollars and twenty-five cents a day. Most of our participants are in low-income, homebound, isolated, have difficulty shopping or preparing their meals and are the most at most risk demographic of COVID nineteen. These are a few of the many reasons why it is important to continue providing the much-needed support to those most vulnerable in our community. Together with our volunteer supporters and partners, we make Meals on Wheels, Orange County an essential force, providing our old neighbors with life-sustaining nourishment, care and resources. With your help, we have met the needs of older adults in our community in more ways than we ever thought possible. Thank you for making such a big impact in the lives of older adults. We look forward to continuing our partnership and providing much-needed support to the community in the years to come. Thank you. So our first speaker is Kenneth Armstrong.
Hi, um, good evening. My name's Kenneth Armstrong. I'm a law student here in Orange County. Um, and I recently became a renter here in Westminster. So I'm very happy to be here, um, as a new resident of the city. Um, so first, uh, the city should faithfully implement any feedback that the city receives on its housing element, which I understand should be coming back either last month or, or coming soon. Um, the administrative funding from these programs, uh, should be used to transition the housing element process from drafting to implementation. The housing opportunities from new zoning should become goals instead of just, um, new zoning numbers. Um, second, I would suggest the city invests in its own resources for individuals facing eviction or renting increases. Um, I've studied the city's website a little bit and I see that the resources for renters page, uh, primarily links to statewide resource. uh, primarily links to statewide resources. Um, but I know you all have your own housing staff, and it'd be great, um, if they, uh, could be, could help connect um, residents to those services. Um, and in general, I'm in strong support of the tenant-based rental assistance program, um, continuing to be a focus of these grants, um, including public education, um, of what's possible under this funding, um, because I'm not sure that residents always know, um, what's available to them. Um, and third, and finally, the city should consider implementing a mobile home rents, rental protection ordinance. Um, San Juan Capistrano has a similar, or has an ordinance, uh, like this for mobile home, um, uh, rent, renters or owners, and I think it would be great if the city, um, takes that on if, if they haven't already. And again, forgive me if, if that's already in place, I'm new to the city. Um, but that includes my comment, and I, uh, look forward to the rest of this process.
Okay, our next speaker is Stella Verdeja.
Good evening. I'm Stella Verdeja, the Executive Director with the Fair Housing Foundation. I'm commenting under the right topic now. Um, I have been the Executive Director for the last two years, but I have been with the agency for over fifteen years. Um, we have been proudly serving the city of Westminster since two thousand fifteen. Um, I have been able to move our staff from five to nine to address the increase in need in regards to landlord and tenant questions, um, mediations, um, and discrimination. Our agency was incorporated in nineteen sixty-four, um, so we have fifty-eight years of fair housing experience. We have policies, we have, uh, procedures that if we've adapted over time outreach, uh, methods throughout the years to be able to adapt to each municipality that we service. Uh, we currently service twenty-four cities, both in LA and Orange County. Um, and each scope of work that we submit is individualized to the city based on, I go through the census and the information on the city website and the demographics, and I create a scope of work that is specific to the city's needs. Um, just want to highlight a couple of things that we've done recently. Um, we participated in, um, partnering with HUD and the Urban Institute to, um, conduct multiple um, research projects, um, within the LA County, Orange County, and San Diego County. We did about four thousand tests, testing for fair housing for research purposes, and assisted with multiple, um, reports being, um, published. Um, additionally, we're a second-year grantee of the FIP, uh, from HUD, which is the Outreach and Initiative Grant for Fair Housing, so that allows us to kind of revamp and our outreach department. We were able to hire an additional outreach coordinator to address the public's needs. Um, we were able to revamp our website to be more friendly to the, uh, the younger generation in regards to like the website. Um, we have InstaChat on our website now, so if someone was Googling us on their phone, they could message one of our staff, you know, instantly regarding any landlord-tenant questions. We've now added a calendar on our website to, for, uh, clients to go ahead and register for either our in-person or virtual workshops. Since COVID, we've decided to opt for a hybrid, so we don't offer just workshops in person or virtual, we do both. Um, and so, um, all the clients that we, in our service area, all our services are completely free to them. Um, so the, that grant really allowed us to just, you know, step up our game in regards to upgrading what, what we we knew needed to be upgraded due to the pandemic. Um, we also have translating services on our website, so any language, um, that it needs to be viewed in, you can select and to be able to translate the whole website. So our mission is we are dedicated to eliminating discrimination in housing and promoting access to housing choices for everyone. Uh, my entire staff has an average of ten years employment with the organization. I myself have fifteen. We are all very, um, proud, and we stand by the mission, and we're all dedicated to making sure that everything that we do is standing and trying to eliminate discrimination and, um, opening the doors for equal housing. Um, for our fair housing program that we offer the city, we break it down into four components. Um, we have our fair housing department, we have a specialist that, uh, screens, um, does the intake for clients who feel that they've been potentially discriminated against. Cases are opened, we investigate each case. We are proud to say that we're education over litigation, because a lot of things happen because a lack of knowledge. So we try to move forward with, uh, workshops, we try to mediate between landlords and tenants. We want landlords to come to us, not be afraid of us, or hesitate, or think that we're trying to get them. Um, it's more of like, let's work together and try to prevent potential discrimination. We have our landlord and tenant counseling department, we have staff dedicated only to being on the phones all day, answering landlord and tenant questions, because that is a high-volume, um, department where there are clients calling in all day regarding, you know, rent increases, evictions, terminations, and so we have counselors that are up to date with the knowledge and are providing information while screening for discrimination and, you know, moving them over to our discrimination department if necessary. We have an outreach department that does workshops, community booths, mediations, presentations in the community. We now do door-to-door mailers for those who don't have internet access. We can target low-income community zip codes and do mailers with our information so they can reach out to us. Um, we have two offices, Orange and Long Beach, open eight to five, Monday through Friday, eight and five, and all our services are free if you're in our service area. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening again. I've been thrown out of the meeting a few times. I think my internet went on the fritz, so I hope, I hope everything's working right now. Uh, anyway, thank you for the opportunity to provide input regarding the housing and community development needs and priorities for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan. Looking at the CDBG funding request attachment, it appears funding requests have, again, outweighed the available available funds for the upcoming year by thirty-nine thousand four hundred and five dollars. Total avail, available CDBG funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three are two million seven hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, which is comprised of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars entitlement funding, the main allocation, and then four hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollar carryover funds, and a million two hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars of program income, which, uh, is a result of the repayment, uh, to the city of a two thousand four loan to a developer, Cambridge Heights LP, which funded the development of an affordable senior housing project through the staff, though the staff report does not indicate which specific project that loan was for. I will suggest again, as I have in prior public hearings, it would be helpful if staff would provide a full breakdown of the funds carried over year to year for the CDBG and home funds. Perhaps an in-depth analysis of unused funds each year would help, better help the city prioritize funding allocations going forward. At the same time, staff could determine why the funds of any particular allocation were not used and make adjustments if when necessary. On a positive note, I see that the one million two hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars CDBG funds from that loan repayment pro, uh, program income have been requested to be allocated toward a homeless or affordable housing project for this coming year, compared to zero CDBG dollars that were requested for the same purpose last year during this time. I would assume, but staff can correct me if I'm wrong, that these funds could be used in conjunction with the one million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars available home funds for a combined total of three million one hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and eight dollars. It could fund a, or go towards funding a homeless or affordable housing project in our city. And that would be great, because it's something that is badly needed in our city and would greatly assist the city in meeting its affordable housing goals and RIN number. I have no real objection to the balance of the request, other than I would always like to see more go toward housing needs at community services versus road repairs, because road repairs have funding sources from a variety of places. I have a wish list like a mile long, but CDBG and home funds can only go so far. I look forward to monitoring and participating in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan more in the future. Thank you for your time.
All right, is there any, uh, public comment?
So if anybody else would like to speak, please raise your hand. This is the last call.
All right, I see, uh, none. And this is a time for the council to discuss and have action.
I'd like to move to receive and file.
All right. Second?
Yeah.
We have the motion and second to receiving file for this item.
That motion was made by Councilmember Ho and second by Mayor Ta. So, Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you.
All right. So we don't have any commission and committee item tonight, and next a common from city council, agency member, including AB one, two, three, four report when required. So who would like to go first?
I, I can go first. Uh, I just wanted to thank, uh, city staff for working very hard, uh, for their dead parade. And, um, you know, uh, with, uh, with all the effort that, uh, they put in, uh, the result that turned out, um, you know, uh, although overwhelming, uh, a lot of people, uh, you know, I think that we, uh, we, uh, we achieved the goal that we want to, to, to have, and, um, you know, safe and, and, uh, you know, secure for everyone. So, uh, I know that the city staff have been working really hard on that, and I appreciate for all, um, including the WPD, so anyway, from for me, uh, I just want to say thank you and, uh, you know, keep up the good work. That's it. That's all from me tonight.
Thank you. So who would like to go next?
May I say, uh, yes, Happy New Year. We are officially in our new year. And I'd like to say Happy New Year to everybody, our staff included. And so let's get the new year off on the right foot, and I think tonight is indicative of that. So I'm very happy that we're, uh, actually going to, um, end our, um, council meeting at a reasonable time, and I'm sure everybody is celebrating that. And next, I'd like to also, um, echo the sentiment, um, the, uh, appreciation that I have for our staff and that I know that's everybody, not just WPD, but, you know, our, um, interim city manager and her staff, and, uh, and I know particularly the assistant city manager and her. Gosh, I can't even name everybody, but I know you all spent so much, um, time and effort um, having to deal with, you know, the COVID situation, the Omicron situation, and the, you know, um, you know, in the mega event and all that, and you want to keep everybody safe. And, you know, the funds that, you know, that went over, and you have to work very hard with the Ted Parade, organization, and so, um, I, I, I'm very happy with the turnout, I really am. And I think, um, we, um, always learn from the previous parade, and I think, um, uh, I'd like to commend the parade organization, uh, being that they only had less than two months to, uh, get, get ready. And I think, uh, uh, you know, our community, uh, I'm not just talking about the Vietnamese. I saw a lot of, um, you know, the West Side, uh, coming over to participate in the parade, and, uh, so I, I, I know that was, you know, that, that a benefit to all. So for that, I thank you for all your hard work. And again, Happy New Year, and if we can end our meetings at a reasonable time like this, we, it'll be very happy. Thank you.
I, I'd like to go next, please. Yes, I want to echo a lot of the sentiments that Councilmember, uh, Ho just mentioned, uh, Happy New Year to all. Thank you for all your hard work, staff, uh, you know, city manager, assistant city manager, um, every, all this, um, public works people were out there. It was a definitely a, a whole uh, citywide effort to, um, celebrate the Ted New Year and have the parade that our community missed last year. Um, so it was great to see everybody out there. Thank you all for that. Special thanks to my driver Gina. Uh, she was great. I got, this year I got to enjoy the Ted Parade from a different, uh, point of view. Before I was a driver, now this time I had a driver, so that was kind of nice. Um, and also, yeah, it was a big effort for, um, for the organizers to put this together in such a short time, but I wasn't going to say this, but, um, it was kind of bothersome to me. I kind of wish that our organizer would have been a little bit more professional. I was disappointed that all our council wasn't, you know, together and, and acknowledged together as a whole. Um, there was a little bit of a division there, and, you know, I understand there's some personal issues there, but to me, you know, what's right is right, and it, it was unfortunate that, you know, that we had to go through that, but, you know, maybe next time it'll be, a little bit better, but anyways, we had, I had a good time. A lot of the community had a great time out there. Lot of smiling faces, and it was real wonderful city event. So again, thank you to all, um, all your staff's hard work and keep, keep up the good work. Thank you.
I guess it's my turn next, so, um, first of all, I'd like to say that, uh, Happy New Year. I mean, I, we didn't get a chance to say it the last time before the Lunar New Year, so, uh, again, um, last weekend was an amazing event with Ted Parade. I mean, it's, it's, it's a Brian Joy of our city, and you know, I want to thank you, our city's employees, I want to thank you, uh, the police department. I want to thank, you know, and you know, the, the old saying, you know, attitude reflect leadership. You look at all the people working in, in the parade, you can, you can see it's a reflection of the leadership that we have in the city. That's, that's a good credit to the city manager, interim city manager, and assistant city, uh, city manager, as well the, 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 the chief of police, uh, Chief Lengi. Uh, this is a team effort. I mean, there's no individual can, can take credit for this, but, uh, it was an amazing event. Uh, we have such a tough time with staffing the, uh, the event, but, uh, against all, uh, the city, uh, staff working closely with organizer, um, and you, you, you know, we, we, we pulled it through, and it was an amazing event. I, I was so happy walking down the parade route and see so many happy faces, you know, this is really truly a Brian Joy of our city, and it brings some, so much happiness and bring the community together. Uh, such an amazing, and, uh, I want to, uh, thank my driver, Jason, he didn't, he didn't tell me his last name, so, but, uh, wonderful. I, I greatly appreciate it, and, uh, the, the city, uh, um, it's just amazing, um, and I want to congratulate and, and thanks the Ted Parade organizer. You know, in such a short, um, a couple of weeks, less than, uh, two months, a little bit more than two months, but any people to raise some money to, and organize a parade, and it's truly a community parade. It's not like a reelection parade. It's not the anti-recall parade. It's none of that. It's just a community parade, and it's the way it should be. And we should take politics out of that parade, you know. I don't care who put it up. I mean, last year, the, the, two year ago, we had two parade, two day, two different city. I had a great time, um, and, and so was the community. And, and it is something that we need to consider as a council, so that we take the politic out of the parade, Ted Parade, and make it a community, truly a community event. So once again, thank you. Thank you very much. But I would just, I want to, um, brought up, uh, So once again, thank you. Thank you very much. But I would just, I want to um brought up uh, um. You know, I understand I have the right to uh put at the place an item on the agenda, but uh, but this particular agenda, I would like to have the uh, the consensus of the city council uh to put it on. This, this bit uh, that's regarding the, you know, all the fake news that we've been um, we've been bombarding out to our uh community, been destroying our community lately. Uh, I'm, you know, for those who understand Vietnamese, uh, you, you, you probably heard a thousand time that's uh all the fake news have been spread out there that uh Cal- Councilwoman Manzo, Councilwoman Kim Lee Ho tried to destroy and break down that uh trying to, you know, trying to now, the Penjung uh statue, uh, then I, uh, and then uh, I heard that uh Councilwoman is a Mormon. He tried to attack the Buddhist uh, uh, and then tried to just, you know, uh, take back the land that the, the Deungnu Temple being built upon. And uh, you want to attack the Buddhist community and it caused an uproar and it, and it's, and it's just really disturbing. So I would like to ask to, to make a motion to ask the city council to approve uh, um, the resolution uh to address the fake news in order to see attorney to assist in drafting a resolution for next week to, so we, we not, we not trying to um attack anyone or curtail anyone, uh, First Amendment right, but we need to address the, the dangers of fake news that's been destroying our community. I mean, you know, when you go to the level of uh psychological warfare, uh bringing uh religion into politics and trying to attack the, uh, destroying the political, you know, political opponent, that is, you know, you're talking about fake news that happen thousand a year, right? But it, when they bring it to the Vietnamese community in this area, it's go to the next level. I mean, it's like, there's no boundary, there's no ethical, anything go and there's no check and balance. There's no authority that can stand up and say, hey, that is fake news and you need to stop that. And I think as a, as a city council, as a, the body of a government body of this city, we need to stand up as an elective official and show a leadership and address though fake news. Okay, those unethical, those are not true. Okay, I can understand you stretching the, the boundary to, to uh, to, you know, to practice on your free uh speech, but when you call somebody racist, call uh, uh, Council Vice Mayor uh, Kalop Manzo a racist, try to destroy a Vietnamese uh, you know, general statue, uh, and, and that would trigger an emotional response. Race and religion is a no-go area. So I'd like to make the motion to have the city attorney to help drafting a resolution for the next council meeting.
Just to clarify, that's to um, an approval uh, for a resolution just denouncing fake news.
Yes, and uh, and yeah, and um clarify some of those uh fake news being floated out there, and we're not trying to um, uh regulate anybody uh constitutional right of freedom of speech. But we need to address those dangerous fake news that can, that could potentially lead to violence.
Um, my understanding is that if you want to put it on the, you know, on the agenda, you are, you, you are free to do it for yourself. You don't have to do it here.
Exactly. Absolutely, but I, yeah, but I would like to, to ask the city council to uh do that as a, a unified body uh to uh, we have the leader of this uh community and it's our responsibility to address though unethical uh and dangerous fake news. And when you, when you're talking about religion, okay, we know what, what it's like, what happened in, in the Vietnam War. Religion was, it was attacked, what happened.
I understand.
And, and, which is second, sir, okay. And you're talking about race. It's a very emotional, very danger territory, and we have seen that in the, in, in history, and we do not want to condone that. Okay, thank you.
You, you go ahead and, 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 you know, put on agenda if you want to, but you know, uh, we have a policy already set out. We are going to follow this policy. That's all. That's what I.
I think, I think uh, uh, Councilmember Do's issue is that, you know, we had a set of policy as far as um, having staff take direction from one, one individual council member. Since uh, he's asking the city attorney to um, to do some work, um, I think it's probably good practice to know that the entire council know that, uh, what's going on. So um, yeah, I'm fine with having uh our city attorney assist with this resolution. I think it's more about that than the actual placement of the item on the agenda that we's trying to direct the city attorney to assist.
If I'm not mistaken.
I, I, I.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Uh, we, i- if I'm not mistaken, this, this already, this uh, this council body already took that and then have their um, have their city attorney draft the resolution before. So why, why is the, is different now? Are we changing the policy now or what? You know, you can, you can bring it up and then, you know, at the next meeting, we can also discuss about it and vote about it, you know? But this is, the, the, this time, we can put it on our agenda by ourselves, right? By yourself. Why can't, why can't we wait until that? Or why can't you do that? We can discuss.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I certainly can do that, but I, but this is a very uh sensitive and volatile issue, and we as as a, and, and the leadership of the city, we got elected by the people, we have the responsibility to raise our concern as a group, and that's why my intention to bring it up to this council uh and make a motion to have the council approve this motion and not just me, one individual to voice objection to to fake news that, that targeting religion in our city, that's, that the targeting uh race in the city. And as in my contention, yeah, I totally understand that I have the right to put on the agenda, but I would want, want this body uh unify, joining me to voice our objections to this kind of uh, of hate activity, if you will.
But could I ask the city attorney to chime in and see, and let us know what is the right thing to do here? I understand Councilmember Do, his intentions, but is this the, what is the proper thing to do now?
The, the, the council has a policy that allows council members to add items to the agenda, but that does not preclude the council from also voting to add items to the agenda. That would be a normal process that is followed. It's really in the council's discretion if they want to do it that way or not. So, but we do have a policy, you can add items, but you could also add an item during a council meeting by taking a vote. Those would be appropriate actions.
Um, I was just concerned about, like, um, remember we had spoken about this in previous meetings as far as um, staff taking direction from one uh council member, and I think this is just puts it out, it's transparency. So that's how I see it, that all the councils made aware that Councilmember Do is asking the assistance from our city attorney. That's how I see it. I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I, I think I'm asking the council to join me in this particular resolution. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
I think if, if you make a motion, see if there's a second to it, and then you can take the vote on whether or not it should be added to the next agenda. That would be.
I second your rating.
So can I ask though, just based on what I heard, I just want to be clear on what you're, what you're asking. Uh, I would say, it sounds like a motion to authorize the city attorney to come back at the next meeting with a resolution that would publicly state, and this is what I'm trying to get clarity on, that there is, there is not, or nor has there been an intent to uh uh, remove or otherwise impact the general, the statue of the general, and there is no intent to take any action related to the property on Chestnut, the temple property? Is that what essentially?
Uh, okay, certainly, my, my motion is basically, we gotta, we're gonna voice our objection to this kind of fake news that, that constitute hate, target this particular council and, and we responsive specifically uh in term of uh the punk, the, those fake news, whether or not those fake news are true and regarding the council policy in response to those fake news, because we need to address as our council uh body so that uh in order to stop these fake news. Otherwise, it's just one individual, it's not going to be effective. Does that make any sense? And then, and we will cite, we will cite source, we will cite sources in, in, in detail so that, that we can generally uh address the issue without uh violate anybody constitutional right of First Amendment.
Yeah, Christian, I haven't, I haven't written down that he wants you to draft a resolution to denounce fake news, but citing some of those fake news items that are circulating out there within that resolution. But overall, it's to denounce fake news in general.
All right. So is there a motion to that effect?
Uh huh. Councilmember Do, second. I'm, I want to make sure that in general, but also specifically.
Yeah, with the examples, the examples of the, that he had mentioned earlier in his um monologue, um, you know, includes those particular, um, you know, those particular examples, those were going to be incorporated in that.
Yeah.
I'll work with the city manager and uh make sure that we get everything included.
Great.
All right, so we have the motion and a second.
So, Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
For the record, uh, I don't, you know, I'm not against the, you know, the idea for bringing it up or do the resolution for that. But I think that we have policy in place that we, we, we can, you know, use that. Otherwise, why do the policy? Why have the policy? So my vote is no.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
I'll abstain because, you know, uh, I think that with the policy majority of city council, we already approve that each council member, you know, have the right to schedule, you know, any item that he or she would like to discuss for future agenda. Yes, so abstain, yes.
Okay, so that motion carried three-one-one with Councilmember Nguyen voting no and Mayor Ta stating.
Okay.
Okay, well, you know, I want to conclude my uh, my uh, my council. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilmember Do.
Go ahead.
You're done. I just had a question. I had a question for a, a city interim city manager. Do we, you know, we're in the middle of a Black History Month. Do we have a resolution acknowledging?
We do not. We do not.
We do not?
We do not, and we haven't before. We do not.
Can we add it on next month?
Yes, can we add it? Can you please add it for our next meeting, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Um, to conclude my uh, uh, comments, uh, well, thank you very much, uh, the council for uh uh supporting my, uh, joining to support my resolution to address the very uh dangerous issue uh that's uh terrorize our community like, uh, lately. And um, you know, once again, uh, to my, uh, uh, you know, I hope every have a, a healthy and prosperous year, uh, year of the tiger. So, thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right, so uh, I'd like to echo the same uh compliment from other, other council member and the rest of the council member that, you know, like to thanks our city staff. I'd like to recognize our interim city manager and interim assistant city manager, they um they uh show up uh on the, on the street at the parade type early. I know that like early, early, like four or five AM in the morning and uh, I really appreciate their dedication and also I think other department, department head like Vanessa, community uh and recreation department show up really early too and other, and other staff. Uh, especially that during a short period of time, the staff could able to provide all five members of the city council of parade vehicle. I think that I really, really want to thank you. Thank you so much. And also the driver. I don't know how, uh, how our staff could able to do that in a really short period of time, I think only, uh, only a few days before the parade. Uh, I think that mean a lot, that really helpful for all of us. And I want to thanks uh our police officer. I know that this is really challenging time, but our police officer, they try our best. They um, they were firm um beyond and above and beyond their duty. I want to thanks other officer from other city as well. I think this is a really um uh good coordination between the community, uh, our city staff and our law enforcement. So I think that everybody really happy about the parade. Uh, that's a really good turnout and I have a opportunity to uh I give out my lucky envelope like I always uh do in every parade. So uh, I believe that everyone have a really, really good time. Really thank you for it. So uh, that's, that's all I have and next uh uh meeting will be on Wednesday, February twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two at seven PM. Meeting adjourned. Yes, please.